Good evening, everyone. Can you all hear me out there? Is this working? I'll call this a meeting of mayor and council work session to order this March 29, 2018, at 3:00 PM. We have a long agenda, so thank you all for indulging and hope everybody stays here for the whole meeting. So, we'll go ahead and get started. The first order of business is a review of the agenda, and I would like to amend our agenda to remove item B2, which is a library committee discussion. The reason for that, quite frankly, is I'm not sure exactly what I was supposed to present. I think there was a little bit of a misunderstanding probably caused by me on that, so I would like to remove that completely from the work session and also from the council meeting next Tuesday. In addition, I would like to add one item under B, and I guess it'll be B6 if we remove B2, and that would be a discussion on the tourism director and welcome center. Anybody else?
Wait a minute, you said D2, and it says discussion of draft development reg... Oh, B, okay. I misunderstood.
Any other?
On the thing, it doesn't have to be, but it's still two. I mean, on our thing, thing, it needs to be.
B, um, B6. Is this working? Because I can't hear a thing. Okay. All right. B6 will be covered in the city manager's, so I don't have any discussion on that. It'll be an update by him, so you can take B6 off. Discussion of illegal trucks on Punkin Town.
So, B6 will be discussed during the city manager.
Right.
You mentioned two items to start with. B2 and what else?
Councilman, I can't understand what you're saying.
B2, you said B2 and something else.
B2 will be removed, and I'm suggesting that we add B6 or 7, depending on what happens. Discussion on tourism director and welcome center.
Okay.
Any others? Okay, we will proceed. Item B1, approval of meeting minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, you have with you or before you the minutes from the March 6, 2018 Public Facilities Authority Meeting, and also the council meeting minutes from March 6, 2018. So I would ask, as always, that you look at those and be prepared to either make changes or vote on those next Tuesday night. Okay? We have removed item B2, so item B3 is a discussion that will be led by councilman, council member Leslie McPherson.
I really, is this Fran Newton? I really thought that Bobby would probably be the one to update on that because I don't have all the documents. They were sent to all of us. We have documents that were sent to us. Does everybody have those?
Yeah, you have.
Okay. So basically, let me just make it as short as possible. We have a constituent on South Carroll had a problem with the sinkhole in the road. If you've driven by there, you've probably seen the snow fencing. Well, maybe it's not snow fencing in Georgia, but you know what I'm talking about around it. Their city was called out several different times to try to figure out what it was. From her testimony, it kept being said, "It's your problem." Well, it ends up, guess what? It's the city's problem. We had a pipe going through there that drained storm water. As a result, it was discovered and eventually verified that is exactly the case. The constituent has, it's cost her money to deal with it, but it's our pipe that's running through there that was leaking, that was falling apart, and I think we need to do something to make it right for the expenses that it's caused her to deal with it. There's still a big hole there right now.
Tom, do you have anything you want to add?
We went out and took a look at the site, when Bobby and January, December, when we got to Fran's the first time, me and you and Jamison. Okay, so it's been several months. There's a sinkhole in the front yard. The property owner hired someone to excavate the sinkhole to determine that there was a pipe there. Those are primarily the expenses that she's asking for reimbursement is the rental and the operator that excavated the hole. Bobby has an engineer working on a design to repair the pipe. That'll be something, depending on the amount, that we'll come back to you all in May. The decision to reimburse or not, I think, is partly a function of the city attorney's advice and your practice, and I've not had one of these yet, so I don't know what your history is. But council member McPherson asked that this go on the agenda for your consideration, and I've included the correspondence between, the written correspondence between the city and the property owner. And then Bobby, if you want to ask him questions, he's had, I'm sure, several conversations with the property owner as we work through this.
And I'll throw in, I don't think that we've got a formal policy. We have had claims like this made in the past that we have taken care of. The legal position, I can't tell you exactly whether or not we would win if she sued us or not, because obviously it did have something to do with the city pipe that caused the problem. I can tell you that even if our insurance company, you know, adjusted the claim, the deductible is much higher than $947, and we would end up spending more than that arguing over the problem.
If you all have read the information that Tom provided to us, this resident has attempted on several occasions, through a couple of staff persons, to make her point that this was city property, even including filling the hole in with gravel. The gravel washed away through the city's pipe down to the creek. She pointed that out. A second city employee came out and did something that determined that it was, in fact, city-owned. So I think the total that she's asking for is less than $1,000 if I'm totaling that up correct. So we don't vote on that today, I know, but that's just, you know, my input. Bobby, do you have anything you want?
Mr. Mayor, we, when I went out and looked at it and did some investigation on it, the issue is, street water's piped down, down South Carroll to a point near her driveway. Instead of coming on down and shooting straight over into the creek, they put a junction box in right there, and it's 45-degree angled across her yard. And there's no easement recorded on it. So the plan is, is to get a little design to intercept it where it makes the turn and carry it down the right-of-way and pour it in like it should have been done a year ago. And that's, I've met with her, and she's great with that fix.
Bobby, it sounds like you're saying that's not city property. There's no right-of-way easement there, is that correct? So what we're doing here is on private property.
There's no easement on the pipe that exists right now where the sinkhole exists.
There's no recorded easement.
Right.
The fact that it's there, and we've been using it for a long time, we have implied easement to it. If that's part of the city's stormwater system, and it's not just serving only her property, then it is a part of our, we do have an implied easement to it.
I don't know if they have an implied easement to it, but I'd really want to argue.
I don't know, but it's our pipe in her front yard that deteriorates.
That's not the issue.
Yes, it is.
My concern is that I have no problem reimbursing this. In fact, I think that's exactly what we probably should do. But I would want to be careful that we made sure that a bona fide attempt was really made over whatever period of time to get the city to do the right thing. And I think that happened here. But I guess I would caution that we wouldn't want to leave the impression in the public that you can go out and incur expenses and then bring your bill to the city council. So there needs to be some kind of a process where we understand that really we failed. And this one is fairly clear, but it won't always be.
Correct.
So that's my caution, and that's why I brought that up. It's not necessarily to get around the ownership issue.
Well, and let me also just mention here the fact that, like you said, incurred bills. I wasn't in on the conversations between the employee and her. Unless somebody recorded it, we don't know exactly what happened initially. But if you go by her testimony and you look at the delay in dates of how long it took to address this, something's wrong in the communication that we are now getting close to a year getting resolved. I think if we would have diagnosed it a lot sooner, she wouldn't have incurred those costs. She incurred those costs according to her testimony because it was denied by the city person that came out that it had anything to do with us. Now, that's her testimony, and, but, and the only other thing I would ask is that if what occurred in the paperwork, in her testimony, if you believe, would you at least investigate that and see if we had a problem with the way our employee handled it? I just ask that that be dealt with. Because I just want city, I know we can't always tell people yes, we have to tell them no sometime, but I think how you handle people makes all the difference in the world on how, on their response to, you know, how the way they feel like they were treated by the city. And that's it.
And Tom, I think this will answer your question, because I want to make sure we make it clear to you and to Councilman McDougal's point. I think you were right in putting this on the work session for us to look at. Anytime we incur a cost, this is my opinion, but anytime we incur a cost on private property, I would prefer that you bring that before the council to make that decision.
We've got two of them today.
So that's my opinion.
No question. And I think that that private, that easement issue is probably the reason that this confusion occurred at City Hall. That, I'm giving somebody the benefit of the doubt, but that was also a concern, but that's.
When I, when I looked at it, I was looking at the quickest way to get that water back on city right-of-way, if possible. And it turns out, that's the quickest, easiest, fastest way to do that.
Not only commenting the same thing, is for it to take over a year to resolve something like this is not good. It makes us look bad.
I agree with that 100%.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Bobby. Item B4, Alan Gaston and Mr. Barber, you're going to present this one soon as the train goes by.
Mayor and council, we have a billboard lease with Gaston Outdoor Advertising that covers a structure built on city property between Glanton Heinzman and I-20. The city attorney and the owner of the company have corresponded over a couple of requests that the owner has made. One involves how we handle a delinquency in rental payment, and the other involves a request by the owner for the city's signature on a form that would enable him to make less expensive removal of tree growth. I was not involved in the creation of this lease and really haven't spent a lot of time on it, but it appears to me that the default position for the city would be to just expect execution of the lease, which would, in this case, be to catch up the arrears and either to continue to make monthly payments, or if we go back to the basis of the lease, the payment that the owner was required to make was to provide the city with one face of a billboard along I-20, so we could go back to that execution also. I'm not familiar with any of the GDOT regs on billboards, so I'm not sure exactly what was going on with that, so I'll leave that to the council to make your best judgment on that one. I have talked to Chris about this, and there is interest on the part of the city to utilize that advertising space. We could do that with events, we could do it with recreational events like the July 3 firework show, so staff is looking for direction from you on how you want to handle this, and I'm sure David's got some input on this as well.
Yeah. Excuse me, it is an issue that's been going on for several years now and really does need to be resolved. And the rent issue is an important part of it. Mr. Gaston is here, he can explain to you what he needs from you with regard to, and the reasons why he needs it from you in order to get some type of permit from the DOT to enable him to trim trees in front of his existing billboards. So if you want to hear from him, he's here.
Is there a desire on the council's part to listen to the, Mr. Gaston?
Get a full picture.
Mayor and city council, Mr. Barber, Mr. Mecklen, my name's Alan Gaston. I live 403 Shady Valley Drive, Carrollton. My wife Stacy is here. She's, I asked Villarica a middle school teacher. And we are the owners of Gaston Outdoor Advertising. I need to discuss two structures to be able to bring in the whole thing of this one structure. There's two structures on I-20. One of them is on Louise and Bobby Dobbs' property, my landowner. And the other one is, it started out with Emma Jean Florence on her property, but her property was split with, when I-20 came through, and there's a small sliver that ended up on the north side of the property behind the elementary school. She wanted me to put a billboard on her structure, but she, she was scared that Medicare and Medicaid would drop or have some kind of effect if she got some more money coming in through an outdoor advertising structure. So she gave this, donated this property to the city of Villarica. When she donated this property to the city of Villarica, I met with Steve Russell, which was the city manager at the time, and Paul Sooty with planning and zoning to discuss about erecting a billboard structure on the city's property. They were all in favor of it to get more income coming into the city. So, but in order to put a billboard structure on the city's property, I had to build a bridge and put a pipe in the ground and everything, and cut some trees to get to the structure, which was about $8,000 to do that. The city's in the lease said they would maintain the bridge and the pipe and keep the grass cut once I did the first part of it. So I did the first part of it, and we erected both, both structures, and so from, that was in the year 2000. So from 2000, 2009, I paid a monthly rent to the city of Villarica. In 2009, Barbara Daniels with the city of Villarica Tourism and Rusty Dean with the city council met with me and told me they'd like to trade out the billboard instead of getting monthly income. So we did that from 2009 to 2013. But during that time period, what I rented the structure out for and what the, what I was paying the city, there's a difference of $750 of benefit toward the city. So they, so the city got a, really a discount of $46,000 during that time period. Then Barber wanted to move the vinyl to Heflin, Alabama, so you could see the billboard coming from eastbound from Alabama. So we moved it there, and that was closer to, a little bit, to what I was paying the city, except it was $100 difference. So that was a savings of $3,600 to the city. So from 2009 to 2016, that was about a $48,600 savings in advertising for the city of Villarica. In 2016, David Milliron, which was the city manager at the time, said that he didn't want to do the trade anymore, that he wanted to do.
Alan, can you hold on a minute? Let this ship go by.
Okay. Sounds like one.
That doesn't sound like a train to me.
Like being over in Savannah.
Yeah.
Just when you think it's safe to talk now, it'll blow again, just so you know.
Well, in 2016, David Milliron said, "I'd like to not have the advertising space on the billboard anymore, that we'd like to pay a monthly fee." So I told him about that some storms have come through, and there's not a bridge there anymore. All there is is a pipe in the ground, and you can't get over the creek anymore. It's just washed away, and nobody's been cutting the grass like the lease arrangements we had. So, and I told him about the trees and the right-of-way, and he said, "Well, let me look into this, and I'll get back with you." So time passed, and he never got back with me, and he had left, and Janet Hyde had left, and some others had left. And then we got a new mayor, a new city councilman, and then when Mr. Barber was hired, I went and met with Mr. Barber, and went, him and Brennan Jones, and told him about all these issues. So he told me to meet with Charlie Davis on a Monday, and on Wednesday, the bridge and the pipe and everything was fixed. And so, Mr. Barber told me to discuss all the other problems with Mr. Mecklen, which I discussed with Mr. Mecklen of how they had passed a law where you can cut trees in the right-of-way now, but you have to go through a lot of situations, like I have to get a bond and have to get safety signs on the interstate. I have to survey the height of the sign, have to pay for a permit, have to pay for arborists to count every tree. Every tree over four inches in diameter, I have to purchase, and it's not at pupwood value. I mean, it's a major expensive value. And that goes to the Roadside Enhancement Beautification Council, which the city's used some of that money for beautifying 61 and 78. And so, the reason why I bring in the Dobbs' property is like the trees on the Dobbs' on the right-of-way blocks the eastbound sign of the Villarica structure, and vice versa. The right-of-way trees on, in front of the Villarica sign blocks the Dobbs' sign going westbound. So to cut the trees, pay to buy the trees and all of that is a cost of $76,000 to get all that done. If a sign is over 75 feet from road grade, once you cut the trees, you have to lower the sign to 75 feet, which mine's over 75 feet, and that's a very expensive process of lowering two structures that high. So in lowering those structures, it would cost another $60,000 to lower both structures. There's a form that the city of Villarica can sign, saying that I can leave my structure at the existing height and that I don't have to lower it if the city, you know, decides to do that. The city of Carrollton has signed two of them for me, and I have documentation where Union City, East Point, Marietta have all signed these same documentations, saying it's okay to keep your structure, you know, at that height. The, I'd be willing, if the city wanted to do a perpetual easement, you know, for that location on one lump fee instead of a monthly fee, I'd be willing to do that. I know I owe a past due of rent from last July, but I've been trying to get these issues worked out to see, you know, what direction we need to head in. The past due amount, I would like to trade that out in billboard space, but I'd like to do it on Highway 61 to keep things more in the realm of what the rent would be instead of on I-20, where I, you know, lose, lose money on it, but, or maybe work out something else. But I'm wide open to see whatever I need to do, because the city of Villarica's paying for two, two billboards on Highway 61 now, which, you know, I don't know what they're paying, this with another company, but they could get this for free or trade or however you want to look at it. But I'm wide open if whatever y'all need me to do, if I need to sit down and talk with Mr. Barber and work these issues out, or where we need to go. And I just got, I've sent Mr. Mecklen a whole bunch of emails from Cracker Barrel and Pilot, where they're, you know, every three weeks are saying, "What's your update on trees? What's your update?" And I feel like that they're, you know, this March and April, when the trees start to bloom, they're going to say, you know, "We're done with you. We've listened to you for too long, and we gotta, you know, we gotta have something, something done there." But this is very important to Stacy and I, because this is, you know, our family business, and appreciate you listening, and I've got a copy of everything that I just mentioned. Did you happen to, did you make?
I don't know if that's in the, I think that's in the packet.
It's in the packet, okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Before you leave, Alan, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Gaston? Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
Tom, are you presenting this?
I'll put this on the addenda at the request of the city attorney.
I think we do need to make a decision on at least that issue about whether or not we will sign off on that form, that the city is okay with him leaving his existing signs as they are without having to lower them. That's apparently the crucial issue. The negotiation on the continuation of the lease is not as time-sensitive. It's important to us, but that's, that's not as time-sensitive to him, I don't think, as the, knowing whether or not we will sign off on that certificate of leaving the signs at the height they are out on the interstate.
Well, I have several questions about the contract, and we don't have to do that here, but the motion is not in regard to that at all. In fact, the cover sheet only mentions that, the signing of that waiver for GDOT. The motion only deals with the money. So, does that need to be edited?
Yeah, let me take a look at that between now and Tuesday, is to make sure. I haven't even read the motion, but I will do so and make sure that the, what I think is the crucial issue gets to you, so you can decide a yes or no.
Well, I think, okay, well.
Yeah, I see the motion now, and I think something needs to be added to that, and I'll see that it is.
We're going to need to get more information on that, on that contract, because it expires.
Why would he have to lower his sign?
I think the only reason to do it is that there is a state requirement that you do so. If we don't, if we, as the local governing authority, don't excuse that.
Oh, okay. Aren't they, aren't they grandfathered in, the ones that are high, but they are now not allowed to trim any trees on those unless they get this special form signed? So if this motion doesn't include that, and that's the thing that's more, that's what you're talking about, right?
Yes.
To leave the structures at the height means we're going to say that we'll sign off on that form about the trees, so Cracker Barrel can be seen and Pilot can be seen on the sign. Okay.
Really, what we're signing off on is saying that we're in favor of the signs as they are now. If you go out and look at them now, we're going to leave them like that. And not have the trees in front of them.
We'll leave them at that height, and we're going to allow them to trim the trees, is that what we say on the form?
Correct.
Tom has been raising his hand, I don't know.
The other question is, what is your thinking about the February 19 renewal? Do you want to renew? Do you want to have the structure taken down? Money versus space? I mean, all those issues need to be discussed, and it might be a good idea for us to handle all four of those items at one time and agree on where we're headed.
If that's the case, I really think that we need to look at this contract. This contract puts an incredible burden on the city. Reading through this, I don't know how it got done, but it's not worth arguing over because we're nine months away or 10 months away from it expiring anyway.
Right.
I think it needs to be looked at.
I agree.
Originally, the contract was done by the Tourism Board, isn't that right? It was the Tourism Board, wasn't it?
During that period of time, when they were trading out billboards for rent, that was true. And part of that was because there was a very thin line between the Tourism Board and the city during a period of this time. I mean, the city clerk was the chair of the Board of Tourism, and there was a lot of interplay and interaction at that time.
I will say this too, but in my opinion, and I, I think that's happened way too often here, I think the contract needs to be with the city, not with any board that's within the city that reports to the council.
Certainly if the city ultimately is responsible. And that's what's happening here, because when you read through this one.
So basically, what I just heard you say, David, is your recollection is that the Board of Tourism was dealing directly with Mr. Gaston on these issues and trade-outs and things like that? Is that a pretty fair assessment?
It is a pretty fair assessment. Really depends on which hat somebody was wearing on the day that they were talking to him, though.
I understand.
That's right, because the burden is on the city to maintain this property. It's on the city to cut back the overgrowth, and these are expensive things. He built a bridge at his ex- He, he built a bridge at his expense, I'm, uh-
And it's not there anymore.
The, the point is, the board of tourism's involved in this contract, but the duty to, to maintain our part is on the city.
Correct.
This has got, you know-
And, and, and this board of tourism doesn't exist anymore also. I mean-
So, David, you'll have, you'll have that-
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll spend some time on between now and Tuesday and have it in better shape.
I have, um, just one concern, trying to look for the perspective of the small business owner if we do delay. Every time we delay, he's getting behind in rent, right? So, I think we need to take that into consideration if the delay is on our side or it's on his side because, and the other thing is, as far as what we delay in regards to the trees, that sort of thing, he could lose business if we don't make a decision on that and those companies decide they really don't want to pay for a sign that's blocked by trees. Cracker Barrel really doesn't, they want you to see Cracker Barrel, not trees, so-
Well, we can make a decision today anyway, so we'll not discuss that Tuesday.
So, just the time sensitivity as to what can be put off and what can't.
Well, I didn't quite understand. You said he's gonna look forward to paying his rental payments, but why would he have to do that? Why couldn't he be making his payments?
Well, I guess because the issue, in a sense, the issues aren't resolved and is the sign not blocked to a degree?
We have a, we have a lease with him, we have a contract.
That, that, that issue is not really related. The lease payments should be getting made and they aren't getting made.
Okay.
So, and those two issues really aren't related at all. He's in arrears on rent and, uh, has got to catch that up either through payment or if we choose to, uh, trade it out through service than one of those two, but he's got to catch that up, period. He, he owes the money for the past due rent.
Any other questions on this before Tuesday, nice discussion? Okay?
Item B five, and this is Councilman McPherson also.
Um, just that there's, Val is here to give us a presentation, a concise presentation. Um, have made some changes, hoping that that might be something that will make this more acceptable, acceptable or additional information, since she couldn't be here to do the presentation. She was out of town the night it was, it was on our agenda. Thank you.
Oh.
It's not gonna be in time.
Do you have one? Do you have one you can look on? Who, who got missed?
Here, I got extra cards.
We can share.
I'm good, go ahead. Please proceed, ma'am. I, I have, uh, we can share.
Here, I'm Val Reddick, speaking on behalf of Atlanta West Vet Hospital and Dr. Burnett, which is located at one oh-two Thomas Dorsey Drive in the city of Villarica. Um, as you probably all are, all are aware of, Dr. Burnett wishes to have a healthcare pet jam, which he hopes to serve twofold, educate and raise awareness in our Villarica community in regard, in regards to proper care for pets and also raise desperately needed donations for various rescues. Um, the rescue organizations are our friends, they're not our enemies, they're trying to help. I've emailed all this stuff to the council people, so hopefully you've had a chance to read it. Um, I've tried to set this up as a à la carte or flexibility situation so we can make this happen, um, where there, we want this to work out, so we're trying to be flexible with everything. Um, I don't have a map of the mill, but basically, um, we would like to set the rescues on the pavement area, which is the southwest parking lot area, which is the railroad tracks area, I believe, and, um, the people with venues that don't have rescues will be on the grass tiers. Um, tables and chairs will be on the grass tier for the concert and the concrete area, of course, opened, will be for dancing and that, for the band, which will be later on. The food vendors will be on the back by the Villarica Police Department area. And, um, the rescue pets will be in the timeframe of from four to seven, which is three hours. The band will be from seven to ten. The animals will be, the rescue animals will be asked to leave. I do have a great wish list on the back, um, that I know everyone's having a problem with as far as, not everyone, the majority is having a problem with, as far as having, um, animals at the mill. Um, I just want to say that, um, we're gonna have people monitoring the mill for pickup. Um, Dr. Burnett doesn't want his guests that are make, that are sponsors and donators to be listening to the band and having an issue either. So, this is something that's gonna be handled. I mean, it's something he does at his office all the time and this is something that we're gonna, um, stay behind. He's gonna be giving away scoop poop bags as well to, um, visitors. Um, I would like to make a suggestion, um, to amend some of this for an alternative location that I hope might work, um, for all involved. Um, if it, if we could use Prospect Park, and I guess y'all know where Prospect Park is. It's on the corner end by James and it does have a stage. If we could use Prospect Park for the rescue and pet events, which will be from, um, four to seven, and then, um, the people that are making a, um, donation and sponsors, we could have the table set up at the mill where he could play at the mill, um, for that one fee of three hundred dollars, two hundred cleanup. Um, you know, that, that would work as well for us.
Questions?
Are you saying that, that would, there would not be any pets running around the grass of the mill?
Um, no, all, it, no, nothing will be, it'll all be, not all, the band will be at the mill. The, the rescues, which they won't be running around, there'll be rescues, you know-
Yeah.
-maintaining their animals. Um, it'll all be at the Prospect Park area, which is by James, you probably will know.
Right.
And, um, there's a parking lot area, which I will have to get permission from the church. I believe they own that parking lot area, but some of the vendors maybe could set up there. Um, also, the gentleman that has Tickled Pink, who has the rescue pets, which you have, he has small pets. You don't, you know, we don't have to carry all, he, he has a camel that people pay lots of money to use that camel. I mean, we don't have to bring a camel, we don't have to bring a porcupine, we don't have to bring these large animals. It's just whatever we choose for him to bring and that we will permit him to bring because he, this is how he takes care of his animals. I mean, you know, he gets funds for these rescue animals. Um, he was just gracious enough, most people pay him to bring them, he was gracious enough to offer them to us, to bring them at no charge, as long as he could, you know, make, try to make money taking pictures or whatever, in, entering a little pet area or whatever for the children, you know? So, um, so, but, but, I mean, we could limit what he brings. He's not opposed to that. I've discussed this with him and he, he understands. Um, but, um, I know Dr. Burnett, Burnett and I had discussed it and he just cannot afford to take away from the rescue and pay for two locations. You know, if he had to pay for Prospect Park and the mill. He's not opposed to paying for the one fee of the three hundred dollars and two hundred cleanup, but just the two fees of that one park is just, I mean, he's, he's doing it for rescue purposes. He's doing it to help the community and people that can't afford things and it's just a, it's a big expense. He just financially can't afford to do that.
So, you're asking us the council to allow you to use Prospect Park, no charge, is that what you're asking?
In, with, along with, it's a combo deal, along with the mill.
Okay, but you do understand, I think one of the bank consignors has had animals in the mill area, was, that's the sitting area, all that grass, people sit on that to watch the events.
No, they won't, they won't be on the grass.
Okay.
In the parking lot. There's a big parking lot out there.
Right.
No, no, they'll be, no, I take that back, for the contest purposes, yeah, they will be on the grass, but, um, in Prospect Park, yes.
In Prospect, but not the mill?
Pardon?
Not the mill, right?
No, 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 they won't be, this combo deal, they won't even be at the mill.
Okay.
No, 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 no animals will be at the mill. This, the, the mill will be, um, we're renting the tables and chairs from the city. Uh, we have people that are willing to donate X amount of dollars to the rescues for table businesses and, um, so, we're gonna be, um, taking their donations for the tables for the band. Um, so, the rescue animals or anything in regard, if anybody wants to adopt a pet, I don't, you know, the rescues are so, they may have a pet this week, they may not have a pet next week. I mean, they just won't know in June what kind of pets or how many pets they may have. I do want to put a limit on it, but, um, but they'll have some pets for adoption for people that may want to come and adopt.
So, will Prospect or Park, that will provide enough needed space along with some parking lot area?
Yeah, we'll have to have the parking lot area. We cannot, there won't be enough space to do that without the parking lot area.
Tom, Tom, this is a question, um, I know what used to happen, but I'm not sure what happens now. Who reserves Prospect or Park, if anyone? Who has purview over that facility? Chris?
Has it been used?
Pointing this way. Vicky, you do? Okay.
What's it rent for?
I couldn't tell you that one off the top of my head, I'm sorry, because that's not one that we get very many inquiries about, but, um-
Janet, do you remember from your rec days? Okay.
Is it, is it being used much at all, period? I mean, I, I don't know of any events I've heard being down there.
I will tell you this, based on my experience, the, the biggest problem that we used to have with that, that was our venue, that was our concert venue, venue is, is-
But it's fallen out of use because we've got the mill.
The biggest problem back then was that people would park, uh, in the loft apartments parking lot. So, Chief's shaking his head, "Yeah, I remember those days well," so, 'cause I got a lot of those calls. So, that's something that, uh, that I think we need to, even if this is considered, I think we need to make sure we, we make that clear, that no one is to use the loft apartment parking lot.
You have to get the permit from the church for the parking lot too, before you-
Who's the, who, uh, that parking lot area that's right beside, is it, uh, Peabody's? What is that? Is that the church's parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right.
Let, let me say something. I, I'm, with this here, I'm concerned with process. Um, I, I feel like this is all still just a mess that I just got a few minutes ago. So, this is a new idea and, and, and it actually may make a difference, I don't know, but I'm, I'm hoping that we talk about process and how to do this in the future because there was nothing in the packet and, and I don't want to sit here and read three pages and try to understand this while I'm respectfully listening. So, I wonder if maybe this could be something we could look at and maybe have questions Tuesday, or maybe somebody could put it in some kind of format that, that we could look at, because I'm guessing you haven't even been talked to about that idea.
No, we, I, I'm just have received, I have talked to Verlin, uh, Shirley was busy, you know, I couldn't get back to Shirley, I have talked with you. Um, but, um, I, I'm just getting a feedback that everyone is just so dissatisfied with the animals at the mill and Dr. Burnett wants, he wants to do the rescue thing, he, he feels like the funds are necessary to continue helping the animals and he, he does a lot of it, it's pocketbook, that a lot of people don't know. And it, it's a burden to him. He, he has two children that are gonna be going to college and, um, so, I mean, this is just a way where they, we can help earn money.
I don't think anybody's questioning whether it's a good idea. It's just a, a matter of how we, if, if there's a way for us to accommodate it, but we, we need to understand exactly what is coming before us and make a decision on that. I feel like today you've thrown out some things that you probably could find a way to work with, but, but I don't know, I won't know really until it's in a format. Maybe you have it in something here that I can figure out, but I'm gonna have to read all of this and see if I can get heads or tails of it.
Right. Well, my, my format, found, format is based on what is acceptable with the city.
I understand, and that's why-
Because what we would love to do, it just doesn't sound like it's gonna happen. So, I'm just trying to make it work where we can do the help for the rescues and we can get this going for the city. And in the future, if it tends to grow, maybe we can move some bigger facility at the Vplex or something, but right now financially, it's just too difficult. Um, and he is in the city, he lives in the city, he, he, he really wants to do it in the city, so, um, and, and the animals that he are taking, is taken care of, come from the city.
Let, let me see if I can sort through this. Uh, what I would like to see personally is, this needs to go and be approved by two staff members at least. Chris needs to look at the concert element of it, that's gonna be held at the mill, and be comfortable with it. Vicky needs to look at it from Prospect or Park standpoint and sign off of it and make sure she's comfortable with it. Tom is our city manager. Those are the people that need to approve these events, just in the future, period. It doesn't need to, you know, go, I know what the process was, so I'm just gonna leave it at that. But before, you know, I would hope that this council votes on it next Tuesday. What I would personally like to see is something approved from Mr. Pike, from Ms. Coleman, from Mr. Barber, and this would be very helpful for me and perhaps this would answer your question. If we had a map of the two facilities and it showed on the map where everything was gonna take place, the, the concert's gonna be at the Mill Amphitheater, this is gonna be in the parking lot that's adjacent to the Mill Amphitheater, this part is gonna be at Prospect or Park. I think if you could just, and I'm not talking about anything elaborate, just a hand draw where we can, where we can read it. I think the council, that may answer your question, uh, and it may put, Chris is shaking his head, "Yes," and Vicky, "Yeah." So, I, if you could do that, Val, I think that would be, that would go a long way.
That'd be fun.
So-
I got a question.
I've just had a lot on me with a, with a wedding and a funeral and my father, so it's just, uh, kinda trying to get here to do it, so.
My, my question for the city attorney is, can the city give away use of a public facility in which revenue is being generated? 'Cause that sounds like a gratuity clause issue to me.
I thought they were paying, he's, he's paying for the facility.
You're not paying, you're clearly not paying. The question is, is it legal?
Yeah.
'Cause it sounds to me like it's a gratuity clause issue and not legal unless they pay rental for it.
For a business, a profit business, I mean-
This is a profit business.
We have, you know, we've got that process that we charge people, nonprofits, for use of the facilities and we have a fund that we charge that out of. For a profit-making business, I, I think you have to charge a fee.
Well, these, this is for rescues. Dr. Burnett has a rescue as well as his private business.
But that, that's still a legal question and I think he just answered that question. If you have, you talk to him as part of that, you get in that big circle.
Does he have any type of separate group or organization that he uses for his rescue? I mean, there are a lot of nonprofit rescue groups around.
Yeah, he, I, I can get that information from him, but he has a lot of, um, rescue organizations. He, he helps and he does work for and he, what he does is try to save the animals and send these animals to the proper rescue group, because he can't, like some of the animals we've had in the cages for a year or two, we couldn't find people adopting them. So, he takes it upon himself to feed these, um, health-wise, take care of them and, and he doesn't want to turn them over 'cause they'll be disposed of from Carroll County. So, he, he tries to save them. And so, and a lot of the rescue people can't take them 'cause they're older pets, so the, you know, he does what he can on his part, um, because he does have the extra cage or whatever, but it does take staff to do it.
David, David, could you just, could you talk with her about legal parts?
I will. I mean, I, I'm guessing that he's got access to some sort of nonprofit that, that could be the sponsoring organization, but we'll, I'll be happy to talk to you about it.
And we've got to move along, but I mean, I, I must have misunderstood. I thought he was renting, I thought you said he was renting the mill.
No, he is paying-
You said something about three hundred dollars and two hundred dollars cleanup.
He is paying for the mill.
Prospect Park.
We have to pay the clean fee and we, I've talked, um, with Chris and-
Okay, okay.
Because of the animal circumstance, we, he advised me to come to the council before paying the three hundred dollars.
Okay.
But he is paying for the tables, chairs, the mill and the clean deposit fee.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
That's what I thought I understood, I just wanted to make sure.
But, but what I heard you say, Val, was that, that he would prefer not to pay for both the Prospect or Park and the Mill Amphitheater.
Right.
So, the question-
If, if indeed, if indeed it works out, because it seems like we want this to work, but it, it seems like we don't want to get a no, 'cause we think it's that important.
Right.
So, if it, indeed we have to kind of move the, move the rescues to another area, we would like a combo rent. We would like a, you know, because we can't help it if, you know, if it's just not working out, but we want it to work.
Well, I, I, I think what Councilman McDougal says is right on point. The question really is, how much do we charge for Prospect or Park? So, Ms. Coleman, can you find that out? 'Cause if it's a hundred dollars, we're talking about standing between, 'cause you're willing to pay, you know, for the Mill Amphitheater, so we're, in essence, talking about a hundred dollars.
We would like a, you know, because we can't help it if, you know, if it's just not working out, but we want it to work.
Well, I, I, I think what Councilman McDougal says is right on point. The question really is, how much do we charge for Prospector Park? So, Ms. Coleman, can you find that out? Because if it's $100, we're talking about standing between, because you're willing to pay, you know, for the Mill Amphitheater, so, we're, in essence, talking about $100 standing between disapproval and disapproval, so, this...
If that's how it is, I think he can probably get enough contributions.
Think y'all can work it out, but you gotta go through the process.
Yeah, I agree.
When I open this, it's, it's not there. And that's not, I don't, I'm not, we gotta work on process.
Any other questions? Thank you, Val.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, we have moved item B6 to the city manager's report, which was a discussion on legal trucks on Pumpkin Town Road. So, with that said, the next item is one that I asked to be added, and that's a discussion on the tourism director and welcome center. And I, and I would just like to, for council to consider to, uh, direct or ask our city manager to, uh, hold off on hiring the tourism director and, uh, any construction on the welcome center until we get a little bit more clarity on some projects that are possibly gonna interface with that. So...
Explain it, what you're saying about the other projects that's gonna interface with that.
Well, because of legal issues, we can't discuss some of it. There's, uh, some property issues, property acquisition issues that could be involved in it. So, and as far as the other one is concerned, in my opinion, uh, we're premature in hiring a tourism director before we have a place for the tourism director to actually set up shop.
I agree.
So, any questions? All right, tab C.
This means, this means that, what, you're not gonna do it, or you couldn't allow it?
No, ma'am. I'm not suggesting that we do, that we stop the project, just delay it until we can get more clarity on that legal issue.
We need to make some decisions, I do believe, before we move forward and spend money.
Tab C, city manager, Mr. Barber?
We have a presentation today from Andy Camp, who is now working with an organization called Nextsite.
Good afternoon, how are you all? It's good to see you again. I have actually a proposal that I was gonna pass out to everybody.
They should have it.
Do they have it? Do you all have it in your package?
We've got this, Andy.
We have it.
I want a copy.
Does anyone want a paper copy?
I'd be okay with a paper copy. I, I like paper.
Don't wanna waste that paper, that's, that's a little piece of control.
We went paperless. Some of us, some of us perhaps more than others.
Andy. Oh, Andy. Now, you just ignored me. Just ignored me that way.
Well, thank you for, uh, thank you for giving me a little bit of time. I know you all have a busy agenda, so I'm gonna try to move quickly into this, so, uh, so you all can look at, uh, and get to all the other items as well. Um, as Tom said, Andy Camp with Nextsite, and our firm is a research, a, um, marketing, and a proactive recruitment company. We're consultants, uh, and what, why we're here talking today is because we, we thought there'd be an opportunity with the city of Villarica. We have a statewide contract with Georgia Power, and in our franchise communities, which Villarica is one of, uh, we're able to also offer a very, uh, unique pricing structure, which makes, uh, makes it very affordable. They brought us in, uh, as, and, uh, our CD rep with Georgia Power, Ms. Elise Davis, couldn't join me today, she's, uh, out of town enjoying some family vacation, so, um, but she does send her best. And I know she's worked with us on several projects, uh, from an economic development point of view over the years, but Georgia Power has a, about a hundred-year-plus history of being in community and economic development, and working with communities within the state to try to strengthen them and help them achieve all of their goals. One of the things that they were consistently hearing was that there was a need to bring some assistance to bear to help, uh, in those areas related to retail and commercial development. So, that, that's where we specifically focus our efforts. As y'all know, there's some changing things about retail, and it's, it's not necessarily just strip centers and big shopping centers anymore, there are components that come together sometimes. So, we find ourselves overlapping into some health services or hospitality efforts as well, as you try to create a complete project that might, uh, bring not only shoppers, but also, um, those businesses to the area that everyone wants to patronize, so... And we do it through a little bit of a unique process, where we do, uh, our own internal research. So, we take Nielsen and Census data, and, oh gosh, just a bunch of other resources, and we throw it all in the top, and we kind of sift it out, so the output is something that we can all understand and manage. And from that, we come back and we look at what those opportunities might be, uh, specifically in the retail sector. Because, uh, as you know, there are SLOs dollars and other, um, there, there are other inputs at stake. Millage, jobs, um, the 3% of local sales tax, and then, of course, divvied up accordingly. But all of that helps fund a lot of things, a lot of revenue for either educational or government projects. Provides the ability to kind of create a good sustainable flow of revenue. So, that, that's, that's the why, that's why we get involved in it. But then that research, we bring back to the community, and we come up with a strategy together, uh, and then we go out and we market it. And everybody is equipped with it. So, um, the, the local economic development team has the marketing and the research as well, so when, you know, when or if the prospect comes in City Hall, they can have that conversation. We go out and we use it to proactively recruit, uh, a lot of times as national brands, but actually just had a meeting earlier today, and, um, when I was in one of our client communities, they had four, uh, new businesses start in their community, small businesses, based on the research that we had provided them, so they could talk to the entrepreneurs as well, and kind of understand where those gaps are, and where they might be able to bring a new business to bear to fill it as well. So, it, it's not just the highway-driven development, it can also be very effective in helping downtown grow, and helping the existing businesses continue to add retail lines, or change service a little bit, and remain relevant and strong, and, you know, be there for many generations. So, our team, uh, you'll see in the, uh, over the pages of it, it, uh, talks about our partner, or partners or principals in there, some of their experience as well. Of course, we're familiar. Um, as, uh, as Tom mentioned, I'm here in a new role, but I had worked with, uh, with the city, uh, through a partnership with Carroll Tomorrow, and during that time, I feel like we had a lot of success together. It was a lot of fun, and I would look forward to another opportunity to do that here with you on this. And we, then, you'll see on page 10, that kind of really sums up the process of what we do, uh, with things in the, uh, in the upper right corner being, uh, really your marketing-driven thing, or your research-driven things, and then the bottom part of it being your marketing-driven things. And then as you move around the dial of the clock, you get out to, you get to the outreach portion of it. Uh, so, this is where we are an extension of the economic development efforts, and we, we hit the road. We go to conferences throughout the southeast, we go to Las Vegas for the recon conference, but I'm based in Georgia. I, I still live in Carroll County, uh, and I go in to Atlanta multiple times a week, and also work with all of our development partners throughout the state as well. So, um, I'm local, but regional, but national, if you will, as part of the team. So, we go out and we do those efforts, all, and all to attract that opportunity based on our research, and based on the desires of the community, to the community in economic development efforts, so... And at the bottom of that page, it talks about our pricing structure. Uh, again, that is a 15-5 per year, and it's a three-year engagement. Um, and I have something else I'd like to hand out to, to just chew on, and this is kind of just a real quick snapshot of what the benefit would be, or the return on the investment. I think it's always good to have some measurable things, and also understand why we, why anyone would invest the money into, um, working on, towards these efforts. So, I, I know that this one's gonna be analog, because I don't know if it made it into the packet or not, right? Okay. There you go. This was just a, a little something that I pulled together real quick, thinking through some of the metrics here in Villarica. And, uh, on that, you'll see, uh, something that we think that actually is a big opportunity here is our restaurants. Uh, and if we were to bring in a new restaurant, uh, that new restaurant would have a projected investment, and I think we put down about 1.2 million, thinking it would be a full-service restaurant, and then had an annual sales of...
3.5.
Thank you. Of 3.5. Hand it out all my copies, I'm sorry. Of 3.5. That's actually a little bit on the low end of, of a full-service restaurant, but we wanted to make sure we were a little conservative in that. Um, and then that restaurant, uh, making those two investments contributes, uh, that number back into the local economy, into the revenue of, for the local, uh, governments and education partners. Uh, and then we, we do that over a 10-year period to look at what that return would be. And you can see, we'd love to work with you all for a long, long time, but I said, "Well, let's just do it on three years." Just, you know, assuming we get all of the work done in three years, you know, we may not be relevant anymore, but, uh, hopefully we continue to be a part of the team longer than that. Uh, anyway, when we do that over a 10-year period, looking at that investment, it has about 185% internal return, which is very good. Uh, I think that everybody'd be happy with getting almost a 200% return on their investment. That's just one restaurant, one. Um, we, we may have two, three, four, we may have multiple opportunities there. Uh, and we'd like, you know, one of the things we look at is we also try to look at communities we think have potential that hasn't been met, and that's one of the reasons I'm here today, too. I, I do feel like there's some opportunity for us to assist, and, uh, because of that, that's why we were very interested in engaging with you. So, I, I'd like to hear if you have any questions about the process and how it works, or the partnership with Georgia Power, and how we kind of came about as being their go-to consultant.
Yes, really nice to run out there. I'd like to know which, which restaurant is thinking make come to Villarica?
Um, well, we, we look in, um, steak houses, um, you know, the Darden brands are pretty, are still growing, they're still adding restaurants. Um, you know, it could be a small one that wants to start here, that we, you know, that we help that owner identify the opportunity, and then go find a, a way to make that work as well. Uh, I think Jefferson's just opened, uh, recently around the corner. We, we work with brands like that as well, so they're not just big nationals, sometimes they're regional ones. Uh, and sometimes those are actually looking to be in, in, you know, a downtown space. Uh, I think of like maybe a, a, a cool pizza joint downtown that could be added, um, something that might, you know, be good for families as well, things like that. Um, the brands itself are sometimes hard to know without doing the research.
Well, didn't you say also not just, you can get more outreach to mom and pops and that sort of thing, that aren't, aren't big brands? Because a lot of time, that's what we want downtown, you know, that aren't chains. You know, along the highway, maybe you want the chains and that sort of thing, but maybe more unique things downtown, just like Gabe's. I mean, they have two locations now.
That's exactly, exactly right. Um, that, uh, we know there'll be some car-centric, interstate-centric opportunities, we want to capture all those that we can, of course, to, you know, give people options. But then downtown is a unique space with the, uh, with the unique opportunity, and those are gonna definitely be smaller, regional plays.
Any other questions for Andy? Before Andy gets away with the podium, I, I wanna, I'm gonna start off the comments after, but I just wanna make the comment while you're up here.
Yes, sir.
That from the time I became the mayor, there wasn't a week that went by that Andy and I didn't have a conversation about something that was potentially gonna come to Villarica, and almost did come to Villarica in one case. Uh, so, thank you for that time with Carroll Tomorrow.
Well, I appreciate it.
So, with that, I don't think there's any other questions, but thank you for being here, Andy. So, with that, I want, I want to start off this discussion, if y'all indulge me just a minute. Um, we pay, we committed into a five-year contract with Carroll Tomorrow at $50,000 a year. So, we have committed 250,000 taxpayer dollars to basically do exactly what Andy Camp just did. I'm used to seeing those presentations, because I got them quite often when he was with Carroll Tomorrow. Uh, I'm not sure we have that same value from Carroll Tomorrow, and I'll go on record as saying that. I would be hard-pressed to, to believe that this city needs to, that this isn't a budgeted item, correct? So, I, you know, I would be hard-pressed, with all due respect to you, Andy, uh, to commit more taxpayer monies to do basically what we've already paid for with Carroll Tomorrow. And, uh, with, with those comments, I'll, I'll open the floor.
I understand, I understand that Carroll Tomorrow is an industrial, they bring an industry to Villarica.
It wasn't when Mr. Camp was there.
Well, that's what it says here.
We are, aren't we three years into that five-year commitment? Okay, so, in a sense, we're locked in for two more years with them. Um, three, three. I thought...
Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Okay, okay, yeah. Um, I also was of the understanding, not that they were totally, but primarily industrial with Carroll Tomorrow. Would that be? Tom's nodding yes.
I think that's currently their strength.
That's what it said in the material. Okay.
The problem is, is we don't have an industrial park with any available space to mount anything. So, we really don't have a lot of opportunity there.
Well, then, since we paid for that contract, who's our best connection with Carroll Tomorrow? We need to get everything we can out of that. Because my understanding, when Janet was here, and it was probably through Andy, that they were quite helpful if we would request it for things downtown and all around everywhere else, not just industrial. So, I guess we need to make sure that our staff is engaging regularly to try to make sure we get as much of our money's worth, because we are locked in for almost three years.
Well, except that we're the customer.
Wouldn't it be like, I don't remember getting locked in if that was an annual basis with Carroll Tomorrow.
This is a five-year deal.
So, that was gonna be, I, I, one, would associate myself with the, the comments that the mayor made, but David, the contract that I looked at was a one-page document that had roughly three sentences on it, and it didn't look to me like it was the kind of document where we could shorten it, uh, if, if, if things just weren't working out. Do you recall it being that way?
No, I, I don't recall off the top of my head. I, I'll pull it out and look at it.
I would like, I would like to know that. I, I think that if there are, there is an opportunity for us to, uh, look at that again, I'd like to, um, especially, you know, if we have another opportunity, and the fact that we have no space...
No space, no industrial.
...of the work that they're supposed to be helping us with, and I personally have had no contact with anyone from Carroll Tomorrow, and I can't tell you how long.
I can.
We used up the space.
That's a good call, Danny. Since the space is gone, they have no reason to call.
Right. We've used it all up.
If we're the, if we're the customer, sometimes the customer has to demand a few things. I don't mean in anything other than a very conciliatory business relationship.
So, who is our replacement for Andy on the Carroll Tomorrow with the city? Crickets.
I think it would probably be Donna Lackey or Daniel.
They were already there.
Yeah, they're already there, but... There, who would be taking over that function?
I, I'm all for whoever the best person that can provide us the service that we need, retail or industrial. And if that happens to be, uh, Mr. Camp's, um, company, then so be it. But we need to, I, I don't, if we admittedly are saying up here that we don't have any industrial space, but yet we're committing $50,000 a year, you know, that's, that's a problem to me.
Me, too. We've used up our industrial space. What's Carroll Tomorrow gonna do for us?
Well, the other thing I'd like to know is, we have an industrial authority, and I think we ought to be hearing regularly from our industrial authority what we need to do, what's out there, do we need to obtain more? What are, what are our options? Danny, you're on that, can you, like, give us some feedback?
When they have something to bring to us, we have a meeting. That's what I can say. Um, other than that, we don't have meetings. So, since we have used, basically used up most of the available, usable industrial space, we don't have anybody beating down the doors to come to Villarica.
Was it, isn't it the authority's job to have something available?
They've looked at the property, but they don't have anything big enough to offer an industry.
So, we need to look at that agreement.
Yep.
Great. Any other discussion? Okay, did we have anything else? Tom, did you have anything else?
I think we're on to Bobby.
Okay. All right, tab D, Bobby? Okay. All right, Tab D., Bobby. Bobby, I don't see it on here, but I want to tell you and Charlie, and anybody else that has anything to do with this nick, or anybody else, the paving project on West Wilson looks great. Nice job, good paving. Okay, it's on there. Never mind, I won't steal your thunder. Please proceed, ma'am.
Hello, everyone. Denise Lyons, Planning and Zoning Specialist. I want to discuss preliminary plat for Liberty Homes on your agenda. This is for Liberty Point Phase Two. Request to us to approve the preliminary application. As you all know, you may know, Liberty Point was formerly Enclave at Mary Lake. It's Connors and Nally Drive. Not sure I'm saying that right. In Douglas County. So, what happened is, they got Phase One built. They're almost done with Phase One. It was final-platted after this piece of property was rezoned from R14, which is our multifamily, to plan development. So, it's a plan development case that came before City Council in 2006, 2007. After it was rezoned, they had to go through a preliminary plat, final plat application process. They got Phase One done and final-platted, and had begun construction, and the plan was to come back and finish Phase Two. And then the economic downturn happened, and they, everything kind of halted there. So, the developer in there now, I believe, is Wade Journey in Phase One, and he's, well, they're nearing completion of their first phase, so now they're ready to move forward with Phase Two. Previously, they had gone through a preliminary plat application process for Phase Two, and received a preliminary plat approval, but when things halted, if you see the areas of the, of the, of there, and if you've been out there, you can see kind of where some of the infrastructure's been laid, some of the grading has been done for Phase Two, but they have not gone through final-plating. So, at the recommendation of staff, we recommended that they come back and do a preliminary plat application again, so that city staff can have an opportunity to review what's there, what they're proposing, which is not any really different from what they originally proposed, but to make sure that, that we have new eyes, you know, eyes on it again before we move them forward to the final plat. We didn't want to present preliminary, no preliminary plat, and just come back to you with a final plat, and things come up. So, that's, that's, that one.
Questions?
Oh, the Planning Commission recommended approval at their Tuesday night meeting.
Bobby, you looked at it. You're satisfied with...
Yes, sir. It was in my direction that they bring it back. It's been 10 years.
Thank you, sir. Questions?
So, when we look at this preliminary plat, and I see the roads back there, do we have a process in place now, and I don't know who's supposed to be talking, but to secure bonds on these roads?
Yes, you are correct. We do.
Okay.
And with the adoption of the new development regulations, that process will be firmed even more.
That's good. We haven't gotten to that yet.
It's coming.
Well, so that kind of thing concerns me. And the, how many more lots is that in that second phase?
About 200 lots.
One ninety?
It's coming down. I can't remember. Seventy, maybe?
What size are these lots?
They're small.
What size are these houses?
Small.
Small wood frame starter homes.
The house sizes, as you reported to Planning Commission, were 1,700 to 2,000 square feet. The originals density that they got approved is the same. Nothing's changing.
What is the main level square foot?
I'm not sure we have a minimum established for that. They're using four different plans out there right now in Phase One.
When this was originally approved, there was no minimum main level square footage for the city?
There was.
That stipulation wasn't put in place. As a plan development, that kind of gives...
Not main level, because there's some two stories. It's the total square footage here.
I understand, but there's a, there's a difference. So, is there not one for the main level?
Not in the existing UDC.
Right. Correct.
Going to be looking at that?
What, did you, did you propose a minimum in the new UDC?
Remember not to get too far afield. The UDC, the development standards are not going to be, that particular question is for the zoning ordinance. That's coming next.
And it's not in our existing zoning?
It's not in our current UDC, no, sir.
But it would typically be a part of the planning phase of these subdivisions, and was it not at that time?
It was not. In a plan development, that stipulation can be placed on the developer at that time, and it was not.
So, are we bound in this review to what was agreed to? David?
No, I don't think so. I think you have the ability to, to change that.
How soon are they looking to?
If they're asking for new permits from us, yes, and we've got the right to make a decision.
Have it been final-platted, so that, how soon are they looking to final plat?
Oh, they've got to do all the construction of the infrastructure before final plat stage. But that's exactly why I wanted to bring it back to y'all.
Well, yeah, I want to look at, and I apologize, I haven't had time to come down there, and you may not have had time to see me anyway, but I've got more questions on this, and I won't take up time today. We've got a full schedule, but there are some things I want to look at.
Absolutely.
It looks like they've cut the area for the roads, but they haven't put the roads in. Is that the case? I'm looking at, here I'm at.
They did some of the grading, but they didn't complete...
There's no curbs and all that, no real roads.
There's a short distance into the Phase Two that they've got curb in, but that's it.
Okay, that's what it looks like.
Did Planning and Zoning look at this this week? Sorry. Did Planning and Zoning look at this?
They recommended approval Tuesday night.
Any questions? Thank you. Item number two, Bobby?
Denise and I are going to play tag team. I know we've gone paperless, I know that, but I think I provided each of y'all with, with the paper version and the electronic version. What...
You mean that 30-pound binder you gave us last month?
This one here?
Mm-hmm. That's holding some stuff down in my...
I understand. The...
My patio furniture.
The new draft regulations have all of our, what you see in this utility design and construction manual, the old version that was adopted in 2004, the new one has all of this updated, complete with brand-new standard details in three different areas, water, sewer, and road construction. It also has floodplain, floodplain management, erosion sediment control ordinance, all the stuff that's sprinkled through the current UDC. This pulls it to a standalone version, easy to follow, tabbed. This is Phase One of what will be a complete review and updating of this and our zoning code, the zoning code I've been working on already. But we wanted to introduce this tonight, and we've got it on our website now. Y'all have it. I would love to be able to get a vote if we could possibly at the May meeting. So, if you need time...
Thank you.
If you need time, please, you know, come by. If I'm busy, I'll take time.
You did all this, though, didn't you, Bobby?
This, this I started as soon as I got here, after looking at this, and did about four different eye rolls and a couple of, you know...
Well, God bless you for doing that, seriously. Now, did Planning and Zoning participate, did the Planning and Zoning...
We had one little small work session on this. They, they were a little bit, they misunderstood it a little bit. They were trying to read zoning into this. This is after zoning has been approved. This is all construction here.
Okay, what was the first book you held up? Was that the UDC, the old UDC code?
No, this, no, this is the old utility design manual. It's got all the water, sewer, and road stuff in it.
I have that one.
And that's, and that's the one you want to replace it with?
This, yes.
This is the one for us to read?
Yeah.
And that's why I was glad for you to say, "Hey."
I'm like Gil, let's hold my furniture down right now.
This is 2004, and state laws, federal regulations, unfunded mandates have changed drastically.
So, you've gone in and revised the old one?
This is currently up to date.
Okay. Thank you, Bobby. Any questions?
I'll have it read well before May, but I'm really glad it's May and not Tuesday.
Item number three, Historic Preservation Commission Board Appointment.
Let me get my notes open this morning. We have, we have a new applicant. We have a vacancy on the Historic Preservation Commission. Laura Booth, I think she resigned, I don't know, it's been two or three months back. We have a young lady, Renee Rooks, has applied to, to serve on that commission. Laura's term expires at the end of this year, December 31, 2018. So, staff would recommend that we, the council, appoint Renee Rooks to fill that unexpired term.
Is this the committee?
Yes, Renee Hooks.
Is this the committee of Darren Swarcroft, is it?
Yes.
That brings up another question, is of the attorney. What's going on with the hood house?
We've had some, had some communication with the church authorities maybe two to three weeks ago, and we're still in somewhat of a holding pattern to know what's going to happen with the property behind the church.
Okay.
But we're staying in communication with them, and I hope that we can do something. I'll make sure we do.
Yeah, okay. So, we will vote on this, or y'all will vote on this next Tuesday night. The applicant will be here for the May meeting to be sworn in, correct?
Yes.
So, other than an application, is there somebody that, like, recommended the person, or...
Dr. Nancy Maum's recommended her.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, item number four.
Back again. This item is for ordinance, ordinance for the purpose of amending Article Three of the downtown overlay district and Article 11 of the definition in our Unified Development Code. I mean, it's to add kennel, a definition for kennels, and to add kennels as a conditional use in our downtown overlay districts. Staff initiated a text amendment to include kennels as a conditional use in the downtown overlay districts, in the commercial mixed use, in the commercial overlay districts for downtown, and to add a definition to the UDC. There, there are provisions that allow kennels in some of the other zoning districts, in the commercial and industrial. And upon review, we noticed that there was no definition of what a kennel is. So, we decided to amend the code to have that moving forward as, as applications for those arise. The definition we used came directly from the department, the Georgia Department of Agriculture. The amendment for the use would allow it as a conditional use, which would mean that it would have, person would have to submit application, and that would have to be heard and given recommendation, recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and final approval by City Council. As a conditional use, and not permitted by right, as a conditional use, you have the ability and flexibility to add conditions that can deal with noise, nuisance, time and manner of operation, staff, limiting terms, and other design or characteristics that you'd like to see in that particular application, and not just allow it as something that can go in directly. So, see as an opportunity to, you know, allow a more diverse type of developments downtown to help with revitalization. The Planning Commission did hear it at their Tuesday night meeting, and they did recommend approval for both the definition and the conditional use.
Has this amendment been advertised as a proposed change in our ordinance? I mean...
Yes, it was, the notice of public hearing was in the legal ad that went for March Planning
So, David, this would have to be a public hearing?
Yes, you'd have to hold another public hearing on Tuesday if anybody has anything to say.
Any questions of staff? Thank you, ma'am.
I should have been... Looking at this junk and savage yard definition up there.
I couldn't hear what you said.
I said, "I was looking at this junk and savage yard definition right up above that kennel."
Absolutely. Here, here. Item number five is reverse angle parking one-way on West Wilson Street, and now is my time to say, whoever had anything to do with overseeing the project, Charlie said he was out there every day, and I can attest to that. He was out there every day. And so, thank you. That's, that's a great job, and I hope that is the blueprint for every paving project that we do in the future here in Villarica, so...
It was done early, wasn't it? I mean, I looked over, and it was open when I thought it wasn't going to be...
Yes, yes, it was...
Wonderful.
Please proceed, sir.
That was part of the, what we hoped to be the plan, and it turns out. Mr. Mayor, we, yeah, I pretty much championed that project, I guess, from the public, public meeting to getting it done, and Charlie was a huge help, along with Jeremy Dukes. The, I think the paving job was one of the best jobs I've seen in a long, long time. They brought, they brought a ton of folks and equipment in there, and they just, the paving was done by like 2:30 that afternoon. The striping guys, their, their small striping machine blew up with them the night before, so they had to do the temporary strip the old-fashioned way with some boards and, you know, that kind of thing. But I think I stopped in after the Planning Commission meeting late Tuesday night, and I counted, I think I counted 59 spaces, and I'm pretty sure that Jeremy Dukes added one space about mid-block. So, my, my ultimate goal was to try to get 60, so we're right at, at the public meeting, you know, we said we're going from 53 to 58. So, I think we squeezed 60. I'll have to verify that. But that being said, staff would like to recommend that we make that current hood-to-curb parking scenario permanent. That's what we would recommend, council, if you're going to vote on that, please. We still got lots of folks ignoring the one-way and all that.
Yes, Lord.
But we've still got about two, two and a half more weeks of work to do to finalize that project with the raised concrete islands and some improved signage and a couple of new streetlights. But the business owners are pretty much all happy with the scenario.
And I asked Bobby before the meeting, and we're going to put concrete islands at the end of those two roads where people are, get confused and come back up the opposite way to, for those of you that didn't come to the meeting, in an effort to try to, obviously visually, you're going to see one lane going one way, and those concrete islands will do that. It'll narrow that down to one lane going the right way. And then we're going to put signs on those concrete islands that say, "Do not enter one way," or whatever.
The big red signs that, you know, if you, if you drive past them, you're just, you're just not paying attention to what you're doing.
Right. I just wanted to make it for the public, you know, there's a, we're not finished yet. This is...
That's correct.
Okay.
I know you're trying to squeeze in spaces, parking spaces, but I encourage you not to squeeze them too tight, because, you know, people hate to get those corridors nicked up because they're so tight.
No, sir. They are a standard width. We haven't changed any of that at all.
Okay.
Were we able to utilize any of that area?
Yes.
Thank you.
The striped area, toward the lower end, yes, we did.
Then my only other concern is because we, until the permanent stuff is done, and Chief knows, because somebody's already sent me a picture and email of the people, and I don't know, is there stops? I've not been over there to drive it to visually try to see what it looks like.
If you go up the wrong way...
It's hard to do.
There's no stop sign there, because it's not designed to go up.
Well, and until we get the concrete islands, can we put some barricades up where the concrete islands are going to be?
Yeah.
Okay.
One-way, do not enter.
Just so...
Mayor can't guarantee they'll stay up, but we'll put them up, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I know that's an ongoing project, like putting up stop signs at the end of Doris Williams Industrial. Any other questions?
Bobby, in the conversation we had...
Bobby, in the conversation we had at City Hall, there was some comments made about the folks that have the enclosed area with the gate.
Yes.
And I thought we were going to put parking available in front of that area.
Well, my intention was to stripe all of it, but the gentleman that owns that business cornered me under his canopy the morning that we were laying it out and convinced me that we could, it was okay to stripe the area where the tractor trailer is sitting. He only moves it every four to five years. But he pretty much asked us to block off the lower gate where the long, short utility trailer is parked, because he moves it a couple times a month. And so I split the difference with him. We striped half of it, and we blocked off half of it.
Now, normally you, if you have a gate, you know, and you have the ability to go on the street without crossing the curb, but yet there is a six-inch curb in front of the gate all the way across. I didn't know if that was.
I told him that we would, we could accommodate that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bobby.
Thanks, sir.
Tab E, item number one, Community Development Grant. Mr. Pop?
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
First item that we have on the agenda is a request from the Lions Club for a community development grant in the amount of $4,315. The Lions Club produces the annual Taste of Villarica event every year in October. This is a continuation of that. Their event will be October the 6th, 2018. And this is, they were awarded a request last year in the amount of $3,865. Are there any questions?
How much is left in this grant?
After the arts fest grant, we have a total of $7,630 if you grant this request. So right now we have $11,0945.
Questions?
Yeah, I have one question, but it's a legal question. I'm a member of the club. Do I need to recuse myself or just make public that I'm a member of the Lions Club? One of the Lions Club?
You should probably not vote on it.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions? Item number two.
Next item is a request for a agreement, license agreement with the Olive Tree for alcohol sales catering for beer and wine at the third annual West Georgia Jazz Festival. This is the third annual jazz festival, and we've had beer and wine sales at the Jazz Fest for the last three years with no incident. We've renegotiated the contract for a 60-40 split after expenses are paid. Last year, we didn't have a ton of alcohol sales. We generated somewhere in the neighborhood of $171 for this event.
You say you renegotiated the contract. What was it last year?
It was 50-50 split. So this year it's 60-40 city and 40 for Olive Tree.
60 for Olive Tree, or?
60 for the city.
No, it's for the city.
Questions? Thank you, sir. Item number three.
Next item on the agenda is the same exact contract. This is just for the May summer concert, which will be on May 19th at the Mill Amphitheater. Same terms and conditions apply for this agenda item. Last year, the May concert generated somewhere in the neighborhood of $700 in revenue for the city. Same revenue split as with the Jazz Festival.
Who is the May concert?
Lana Rhythm, sir.
Okay. My only question is, will this be the last alcohol request for the summer concert? I guess what I'm trying to find out is, are we going down a road where we're going to do that at all concerts? Or is it still just a few of them? What is the plan going forward?
We'll do similar requests for, in the neighborhood of three other events. So we'll be the other concert that will be in August and probably one more event. Can't think of it right off the bat.
I'll just express a little reservation about us doing this at all our concerts and leave it at that. I know we do it occasionally. I'd hate to, I'm not real crazy about us doing the alcohol and beer at all the concerts.
Other comments or questions? Next item, sir.
Next item on the agenda is DDA appointment. This appointment is from Mr. Jerry Doyle. This is a reappointment for term that actually started October of 2017 and will end October of 2021. The DDA did vote to recommend reappointment with Mr. Doyle.
Okay. Item number five.
Next item is a request from Stepping Stones Foundation to serve beer and wine at the Mill Amphitheater. This is the third request from them. You will remember, this is the event that happens in August with the fraternity. They do it for fundraiser for scholarships. We did speak with police department. They indicated that they have not had any issues with this event. Staff recommends that we approve their request to serve beer and wine at their event.
I'll just clarify that this is a private organization and they sell tickets.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, what's the difference in one and, excuse me, two and three and this one?
Two and three are city events, and this is a private organization that is running the amphitheater.
If that's the case, then how can we give somebody the ability to sell alcohol?
What we do is we require them to use a cater, a vendor that has a catered alcohol license permit. So they would either have to use one of the two that are licensed in the city. This is the third year that we.
Yeah, I'll say this one's been approved. I know.
Oh, yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just looking at, we have license agreement alcohol sales at the West Georgia Jazz Festival and license agreement alcohol sales or midsummer concert, but we don't have anything about a license agreement with who they're going to get to use their license with.
In our ordinance, there's a provision for a special, a special event for a private, special private event, and they're required to use a licensed city vendor in order to staff that. So that, and they really only have two choices that they can use.
Okay. That's the Olive Tree and who's the other?
Probably Unco. No, the Olive Tree and the Spot, which is a event hall, basically. It's an event rental space. There's only two entities in the city licensed to serve off-site.
The Spot?
That's the name.
I thought that's the barbecue place over on Flatiron.
Seven's.
Events Unlimited, but they also call it Spot.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Have good barbecue.
Any other questions on item number five? Item number six, Sound and Lighting Contract.
The next item is 2018 Sound and Lighting Contract for the Mill Amphitheater. There were two bids that were, that requested to be considered. You have that information in your package about the two bidders. The lowest responsive bidder was Cheville, say your name? Chevalier, yes, Chevalier. Sound and Lighting, $23,650. This is a budgeted item. This is for all concerts at the amphitheater except for the Jazz Festival, which staff is currently working for an alternative plan for that particular event.
If the event is not held, do we get a reduction in the price? I mean, if they don't have to do the sound and lighting for, they have to do it at council occasionally.
As a general rule, what we've done in specific events, having been insurance, we could definitely, when we sit down and negotiate the contract, we can work that out in the details, and we can definitely take that into consideration.
In your proposal, did you require anybody that returned a bid to bid on all six of them? Or I believe it was six, was it not? Or seven?
We did, we allowed for them to do bid alternatives, and we also had it where they bid for all of them, but they also gave us a separate price per event.
So when you requested a bid, you said to every bidder that you can sort of cherry pick what you will and you will not do?
No, we asked them to give us a price for all.
Okay.
And everybody gave us a price. We get a price break because they bid on multiple ones. The one that we're recommending was not available for the Jazz Fest because they'd already booked. But they were still, even with you included that, they were still the lowest bidder. So from a financial standpoint, it made more sense for the city for us to find another person to do the Jazz Festival and then award the contract, because it's still.
I understand that, but my concern is that we're always consistent in our bid process, and to me, that's a non-responsive bidder. David?
I haven't looked at all of the bids. I'd have to look at the bid specifications to see what was required of them.
Okay.
I'll do that.
Well, so Chris, in your experience, though, would you not rebid this? Or would you not consider that a non-responsive bidder?
No, in this bid specs we put in there, that the city could waive technicalities in order to be able to provide the best fair value or the best bang for the buck, if you will, for the city.
Okay, but I don't think leaving a concert out is a technicality. But I'll let the city attorney advise us on that. Obviously, we always want to get the best deal. It looks like that was by far the best deal, even if you included what we may end up paying for the Jazz Festival. I just want to make sure that we are always consistent in how we do these bids. And there's also a law to this. So if you'll look into that, David.
I will.
Do I recall that this bidder, I'm sorry, came, was recommended by Graddock Communications? Or Steve Graddock?
They had some recommendations. We required them to provide references that we checked. Milltown was referenced, City Carrollton was referenced, and Graddock Communications was.
I just found it. Thank you. There it is.
So how would you say that this other bid was about three times the price of the one you recommended? I mean, that's a big difference. Seventy-seven and a half thousand versus 23 and a half thousand.
Not following the question.
What's the negative?
I think what the councilman is just asking is, there seems to be a wide gap between the low bidder and the high bidder, and there's only two bids. Did anything, did we miss something? I think that's what he's asking.
Yeah.
Is there a reason for that? Or then we just got a great deal? I mean, if that's.
That's good.
That's what it is. That's what it is.
Well, I mean, you know, it's, last year, we had a bid of $45,000. The other one was a hundred-something thousand.
True.
Saw that.
That's true.
So it's not uncommon for the bids to be.
We probably asked the same question.
There's not a tremendous difference. I think the second bid was $45,000, and this one's 23.
Yeah, it was quite a bit lower, but it gave me peace to see the, to see the references. I think that's a positive point.
I think, I think we all need to consider, when we're doing the budget this year, whether it's time for our city to have a purchasing manager that's responsible for all big purchases in the city to make sure that we're all, not that anything was done here wrong. I have no evidence that it was. But I think, I would hope Tom would agree with that, that we need someone that's well-versed in purchasing procedures to look at these things. So.
Any other questions on item six? Tab F, chief?
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm presenting two items. The first item is a budgeted item, which is to equip the full patrol cars. We're asking that you approve Metropolitan Communications to equip the sedans. This has been our practice for the last couple of years since the other business that we used quit doing it. So that's the first item. And.
Is this already budgeted?
This is budgeted, and it's coming out of Douglas County SPOSS.
Any questions?
I want to say, it says sedans. We're not, we're going away from the Explorer?
Not, not completely. We're kind of rotating some, doing both.
Item number two.
The second item is a purchase of what's called an L-SAG tag reader. We have one tag reader in your package. It explains it in detail. That tag reader is more for traffic enforcement. This tag reader is more for interstate interdiction. It helps us be knowledgeable about where vehicles have been across the border. Vehicles have been used for different participation in different events and stuff. And it kind of helps us maybe even help with the, it said it in there, the child.
The alert system or something?
It's kind of like that, but it helps us on the, where children are missing and things like that. And trafficking, yeah, the child trafficking and stuff. And, and so it's a lot more robust system, and it'll help us a lot in that area. We're asking to pay for that through drug money, so it's not coming out of the budget.
Saw that. I've been waiting on you to spend some of that on something good. I like it.
Thank you.
How did you choose?
Out of more than curiosity, but I care. How does it help with the trafficking? How does this reader, what information is out there?
It keeps up, it keeps up more with these cars that go to high-trafficking, you know, areas and things like that, so it'll help us in that knowledge.
So if it comes out of Atlanta, it already.
If it's in and out of Atlanta a lot, you know, traveling, then that's going to help us. And every other tag reader that's on the system will report back to us. It'll also give us tips on a vehicle that may be coming, you know, like the feds may have put out, say this vehicle has been seen, that they can't stop it, so they'll let us stop it, so it'll give us a tip that we can stop it if there's drugs involved, money, stuff like that.
How did you choose Mountain Associates, chief?
I'm sorry?
How did you choose Mountain Associates as either of the ones that deal in this stuff?
Right. They're the ones that deal in that system here.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. As Sarah makes her way forward, this is, you know, I love her little charts and stuff, and I keep them near to my heart most of the time. But I want to suggest, this is not my suggestion, another council person actually said this to me, and I thought it was kind of a good idea. And this is not to say that I don't like to see, you know, Sarah give her presentation. She does a great job. But what would the council, you know, and I wanted to give the report tonight, but what would the council think about us getting abbreviated version of this on the work session night and the full report on council nights, rather than her have to repeat the same thing twice?
I think that's a great idea.
Does everybody, we can't vote, obviously, but. What's an abbreviated version?
Whatever she makes the definition of.
So if the city manager would take that under advisement. Proceed, ma'am.
All right, here's your financial update from February. First is our cash in the bank, and I did switch the order, so seven, whoa. Twenty seventeen is showing first and then 2018. Total cash in the bank at last, this point last year was 7.3 million. Now it's 9.6 million. The next, the top three items, those are part of our pooled cash. They are not actual bank accounts. General fund showed a 7.8 million, and water sewer fund showed almost 400,000 at the end of February. Sanitation and solid waste are still a negative 400,000. The bottom three are our three SPOSS accounts. Any questions on those?
No, but I appreciate you switching them, because that flows a lot better for me.
Okay, next slide.
Keep being interrupted right now, Sharon.
All right, next is our growth slide. Again, all the slides have changed, 17 to 18. This is only new construction, so we get permits for various items, but this is only showing new construction. So we've got another, maybe remodel, that kind of things for commercial, but you're seeing zero new in these months so far. However, in residential, in building permits alone, again, new construction. We went from five for the first two months of 2017 to 46 in the first two months of 2018. Wonderful. It's amazing what one year can do. Go on to the next slide, please. All right, this is our business activity, water and sewer. All right, this is our business activity, water and sewer. So again, this is year-to-date, so January, we just looked at one month, but this is now January and February. So you can see our revenue is coming in right there. So January was only a partial month because I had to move some of that revenue back to the prior year, and then February is a full month, and it was our first month with the new rates. So what you're seeing here does include one month of the rate increases. That miscellaneous revenue, that's where our tap fees were, which in the growth slide we just saw, we have received significant tap fees so far this year. Water, well, I won't go line by line, but if you look at the bottom line, our net loss in 2017, within two months, was already 436,000 dollars loss, and in two months in 2018, it's 328,000 dollars. That is a 25% difference. So we are starting to see that we're helping ourselves here with this rate increase. Going on to the next slide, this is sanitation and solid waste. Again, this is January and February, with February being our first rate increase month, first month where trash was mandatory. So we do see actually a larger net loss here from last year, but we've had, our tipping fees have increased, and also this, we have a more accurate representation of how many employees are actually doing this work. So this has seven employees, whereas last year was only four.
Stop, just to say right there, I just want to point something out on those two graphs, those two pieces of information you just gave us. We've cut into the deficit even more on what we've lost as far as our enterprise fund is concerned. And as of this time last year, we had basically lost 436,657 dollars. That same period of time this year, we're now 328,180. That's over a hundred thousand dollars less that were taken out of the general fund. The difference in the sanitation and solid waste fund is because, primarily because of the tipping fee increase with Douglas County. Is that correct?
That's a big part of it. Yes, and we need to find the personnel.
We were charging on the public works before.
Any other questions on the business activity? All right, next slide. So this, just wanted to bring you another update on our senior discount. So we've spoken previously, we had 670 qualified discounted customers last year. When I was here last month, only two, or, excuse me, 189 had qualified. Since then, you've raised the income limit, and now we're up to 225 customers that qualify, so that's 34% of that original 670 number. So we're up, in just a couple of weeks, we're up 36 people that were able to qualify since you increased it. We still have, we still have some that have come in and applied anyway. We have 16 folks that were still disqualified because of income, and we still have 16 people who have not completed their information. Any questions on that?
Assuming you notified them that something's missing.
Yes, my staff has contacted them multiple times, so we haven't heard back. Okay, and lastly, just wanted to end up on another positive note, self-funded insurance. So when we went self-funded in October, previously, we would send a big check to our insurance carrier, which used to be United Healthcare. We'd send them a big check every month, and they would get to keep it whether we spent that or not. Now, we're putting that money in the bank and actually even more, and we're only paying what's actually being used. So we're only paying administrative fees and then claims for medical insurance, or medical claims and prescription claims. And just the cash difference between those two situations in, what, how many months? About five months? We've saved 177,000 dollars. So that's money sitting in our bank account, not theirs.
Questions? Thank you, sir. Item two?
All right, so next is our proposed budget and now millage calendar for our 2019 budget year. I know it hasn't been too many months since we just finished our previous budget.
Seems like we just did, doesn't it?
But now that our year-end is September 30th, we'll be starting the budget process probably every, probably in March of every year. I'll let her bring it up. So this is our proposed calendar. Just want to point out a couple of dates you can see here. I've tried to indicate whether it was staff-related council meeting or it's just informational. Basically, I'll be distributing the forms to staff April 17th, and they have about a month to get that back. Some of the green items are new to the calendar. Those first two green items, those, I put the special call, council meeting for a council retreat. We did this last year. We had two, I think it was two Fridays back-to-back, where each department had a time to kind of speak to y'all about what's going on in our areas and what we hope to see, and then the council was able to give feedback. So I don't know if that's something y'all want to do again, but I put that on there because that actually gave us some ideas or things that you, that we needed to think about in the budget. So I like to have that at the beginning of the budget process. Next, the staff will return the forms May 11th, so that's when Tom and I will start meeting regularly and trying to put the budget together. And then another one at the end of June, which is actually right after y'all's GMA conference, but this, like, just like we did last year, we did two-by-two meetings. I don't know if that's something that you want to do again, but that's in there. Now, the red items, those are millage items. Last year, that was separate because we did that in the summer, and the budget was more in the fall. But now, one of the perks of doing the, of switching our fiscal year is that we could do it together. So we'll be setting the millage at the same time we'll be doing our budget. So those items are included here as well. And then lastly, I want to point out that blue item, August 9th. We've included a town hall meeting for the public, so this would be a time, so we'll be pretty well through our budget process. We'll have had workshops or work sessions with the council. This will be a time for us, probably me, leading a conversation with the public about that. So, any questions or comments?
I'm sure it's in here, but I couldn't find it when I looked, did I not? Will there be a time for the department heads to speak directly to the council and present their budgets, or talk about their budgets and what their goals are, and what their objectives are?
We have, we do have the retreat at the beginning of the process where they really wouldn't necessarily have their budget, but that's where some of that conversation could happen more, I would say, that's where objective-type conversations could happen. We also have several workshops where I would, I'm imagining those would be a little bit more in, yes.
So it sounds like to me that the council, there's council members that are not comfortable with the two-by-twos that we did?
I personally don't have a problem with it, I just want to make sure...
I've got at least two.
Okay.
So I think we're back to more of a traditional work session, workshop.
Or sense.
You know, I mean, there's pros and cons doing it either way, but I heard the complaint, and so the calendar reflects.
I just think it's, you know, this is my opinion, but I think it's very important, I want to hear the department heads present their budgets, I want to know what their goals are, what their, the things that they accomplished in this budget year, the things, objectives and goals that they have for the upcoming budget year is one component. And also, I remember at least one of the councilmen and I talked last year, if there are new positions in this budget, I'd like to see job descriptions, pay grades if that's been determined, but definitely job descriptions, what the new employees would be doing, so...
Yeah, and when we do hear that, I think that's the advantage of having us all together. I don't have a problem with some of the two-by-two, but if we're in a meeting really discussing it, and I can't hear Shirley's input, and I can't hear Gil's input, we don't have that back and forth when we're not all together. So we at least need to have some time when we're all together. But I agree with you about the department heads. I felt like we did some of that in the retreat. I remember them trying to give input on what they needed and what their recommendations were, so ditto.
Other comments?
One more item that's not on here. So I think Tom mentioned it in his city manager update about the Douglas County Sploß. I had a call from their Douglasville Finance Director saying, oh my goodness, have you calculated what you owe back to Douglas County for the fire Sploß, fire capital? And it is in the agreement, our IGA with Douglas County, that we have to pay, I believe it's a little over 13% of our Douglas County Sploß, back to Douglas County for them to use in their fire capital purchases.
Got that, Gil.
And have received two invoices so far, so they're spending it, and so we're having to pay them back for that.
When did we get this agreement?
I guess you, 26...
It was part of the service delivery agreement, last one we had with Douglas County.
It was basically, do you want fire protection?
You want fire protection, then this is what you have to do. And legally, they could do it. Are we not right? That's how we got in that whole agreement. They charge us for fire, they charge us for animal control separately and everything.
Well, and the city did go through the process of deciding whether or not we wanted to contract with Douglas County, with Carroll County, or build our, or have our own fire department. And that was the choice that the council made as being the most economical at the time.
So that's not, that was not identified specifically in our 2018 capital budget. So Tom and I have met, we've looked over the Sploß, we've kind of reworked it for the next five years, met with the departments to see if their, the requests that they had for the five-year capital plan had changed. So we've reworked that, trying to beef it up more. We've met with Nick, talked about buildings and fleet, let's be more proactive. We know we're going to have to replace vehicles, we know we're going to have to replace roofs and carpets and that kind of stuff. So trying to be more thorough with our five-year capital plan. So with that being said, we'd like to have a work session with council probably in two weeks. I was telling Tom, either Thursday, April 12th or Thursday, April 19th, so that we could go over all that with y'all.
Just to elaborate, and Tom and I had this discussion, the way the Sploß was uploaded in the past, it was all front-loaded, rather than being assigned year after year after year. So when this suddenly hit, when we realized that we had to pay this back to Douglas County, that was problematic, because all the money had already been basically front-loaded for projects. So by doing it this way, department heads and council will know what's supposed to be spent in 2018, 2019, so forth and so on.
How long is this agreement?
Yeah, I think it's a six-year Sploß, and we just, we just started receiving money at the end of 2017. So we're at the beginning of it.
Okay, but the service delivery strategy, that, you think that is a six-year agreement with Douglas County on this fire piece?
I'll have to go back and look at that, Gil. I really, I don't remember the specifics, but it was, we were either going to have to pay out of the general fund, I mean, this was a mechanism to avoid having to just write them a check out of the, out of the general fund every year.
I just wonder if it still might be something we want to take a look at.
Sure.
Just recently, I've run into and shared it with some folks here, some issues. So it's interesting that this come up at this time. I wasn't aware of that, and I didn't see it in the budget, and now I know why.
I have a recollection, just off the top of my head, but I have not looked at the agreement lately, that there is an out mechanism for us if we choose to begin our own fire department.
Which we were advised was cost prohibitive? I believe this agreement was done under Pat, isn't that right? City manager, the intergovernmental agreement when all the stuff came up with the fire protection and the animal control? I was looking at the only people that were here at the same time. Well, Danny, you were on, isn't that right?
We, um...
Wasn't that intergovernmental agreement done that first year we were on council with Pat as the city manager?
Yeah, we kind of got forced in, you know, obviously, our own fire department was way too expensive, we couldn't afford it. We couldn't afford to carry it out of Carroll County. I mean, you had a choice, but given the economics, that was really the only choice. Yeah, it was one of three, it was the only viable solution we had.
Any other questions, comments? Councilman McDougall, looked like you were about to say something.
Well, I was just going to say, we want to make sure we're getting, we're getting what we're paying for. So I still think it's worth looking at. Having our own fire department may not be the answer, but it's worth looking at.
Thank you, sir. Tab H, Public Works?
Want your own big truck now, huh?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
Have an opportunity here, it's something that presented itself, it might help us be a little more self-sufficient. And that is, came across a well-maintained, used 18-wheeler tractor-trailer that would let us get out of the contract hauling business we've been in for the last four years. Last year, we spent 36,400 dollars on sublet trucking services for our sludge hauling between our two water wastewater treatment plants. And that's become a little more problematic lately because it's not really convenient for them either. They're really trying to help us out, but some days, when we have to reposition a trailer under these chutes for the waste, we may call them, and it's two days before they can get a truck out there, and that really slows down our process. So this would make the plant self-reliant, while allowing them to process the sludge removal under their own timetable and just be more efficient. And the truck would be not to exceed 35,000 dollars, and so that would pay for itself roughly in what we spent for a year, and after that, it'd just be the maintenance cost. And one reason this would work better now, I know we had a truck of our own four or five years ago. We had to hire a dedicated driver because we didn't have any Class A drivers right now. We have four in the city, two of that are in the wastewater treatment plant now. And this truck usually makes three trips a week, so it's not like they won't have time to do it. The furthest we have to haul is rock mark, usually it's closer.
Okay, so I'm kind of a detail person, so I'm going to bore somebody to death, but I'm going to try to, you just say no if I say something dumb, but this is the products that are not recycled in the process of trying to treat the water. Okay? Without going into detail, I'm trying to dance around, you know, okay?
They're called solids.
So this trailer, this trailer that we have, stainless steel trailer, that we have backs up underneath this conveyor belt, and the solids are placed on that, and they're carried to a landfill, okay? Right now, in the past, we have paid a company to bring out the tractor, which is the truck portion of a tractor-trailer, hook up to it, move it forward, so that, because the conveyor belt doesn't move, so if you just leave it in one place, all the stuff eventually overflows. So they come out, they move the trailer 20 foot, 30 foot, 40 foot?
Probably 15 at times.
15 foot. They leave, they fill it up, then they come back. I mean, that's, that's not...
And we pay them each time. Hundred and fifty dollars to come and move it, and it's usually 300 to 350 dollars each trip to the landfill. And so I'm curious why it took four years to... We didn't have the drivers on staff.
Uh-huh. We have some now.
Uh-huh.
So we already have...
Get a driver and a truck. We had a truck. I was going to finish my... And we had a driver, I think up to about four years ago, but...
Yeah.
It kind of had an accident at the landfill, and I won't go into the details of that, but we didn't have a truck after that.
So we have two trailers, and one is for stolen tires, picking up stolen tires, and one is for sludge. And we have, we need a tractor now, moving around with it. Here it is, okay.
And this is, and that would be just one part of this, because if we do find a way to justify buying the tractor, then I'd like us to also look at buying an enclosed U-Semi trailer, a 50-foot trailer, that would not exceed 10,000 dollars. And that would let us also cut a tremendous amount of cost on our solid waste tires at landfill. There's a place in Atlanta, I've researched, Liberty Tire Recycling, they're a nationwide chain. They don't put anything in landfills, they use every bit of the tires they, they take care of. And right now, we're paying between 15 dollars and 45 dollars per tire when we have to pick up tires and take those to the landfill.
That's horrible.
It's horrible. The, with, these people will pay 2 dollars for a passenger car tire and up to 18 dollars for a semi-sized tire. We would fill this trailer to capacity, probably take it twice a year, and it would just, I mean, that would pay for itself in no time. The only question maybe would be where we would park it. I would like to put it at the community service down here, it'd be a good-looking trailer, but...
You'd like to put it where?
Community service area down here.
Right behind?
Mm-hmm. And if that's not good, then we may can find room out of the...
He's talking about the tire truck now.
Enclosed the trailer.
Trailer, yeah, I know.
Might just be a solid white trailer.
It's just a solid white trailer.
At least the picture I looked at.
It'd be similar to that, yes, ma'am. The other good thing about having that is, I was talking to Jamison about it, and with us cutting back our street sweeper program, that this would be a really major thing for our stormwater MS4 program, and he said this would be a very good thing to put on that would help us with the state compliance on that, too. But then we'll have to get into how much tire picking up we want to do. Right now, we're cleaning up, you know, where things are illegally dumped and things like that, but we don't normally pick them up on our solid waste route, so we might have to get some further clarification. to get some further clarification on that, but to me, these both make sense, and lets us be more in control of both of our processes, and it, I don't see either one of them not fully paying for themselves in a year, and after that, the annual maintenance on the truck should be less than $4,500 a year.
D and K is also local. D and K, they're a local company.
Yes, they, they handle all of our heavy equipment for the last 10 or 12 years. They've actually, they found this truck, and they called me with it in mind, and it was in good enough shape, I believe it was a rider truck, got extensive service records with it, so...
Are they holding it for you?
What's that, sir?
Are they holding it for you?
Well, they actually already bought it, because they know they can make plenty of money on it, it's that good of a truck, they're holding it right now for me, yeah. They said they'd wait until we had this council meeting Tuesday night, so, but, yeah, it, when it came across there, you know, where they were at, they, yeah, it was a good truck.
So, it's 45, we're already paying 36, because I knew it was...
No, it's, it's 35, the truck. And the trailer is 10.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, okay, 35, and then if you, with the trailer, that could also be used for...
Hauling tires.
Tires, to the recycle, take them, that's the year, then we don't have to pay the tipping fees, because we're several times a year, we're taking them to the recycle.
You still pay tipping fees.
Just a lot less.
You're just not, it's just you're taking it at once.
Tires to the landfill, we would then make that all together.
Okay.
We're not taking them to accompany the ground's tires, we're taking them...
This, Liberty Tire does that, they, they use every bit of it, including the steel belts, they even have a place they recycle the steel, nothing goes into a landfill from their facility.
Right now, we're landfilling all of it.
Any other questions? Okay, item number two.
We have a request for the purchase of a budgeted Caterpillar 289D skid steer on state contract for the distribution. This is a larger skid steer than they have now, the one they got has a lot of age on it, this has the ability to lift heavier pipes as we work towards possibly using more ductile iron and things of that nature. And as they get two more people in June, they're hoping we can start breaking out into two and three teams, they just need this piece of equipment to move forward.
Okay.
So, this would just be a request that we purchase this budgeted out.
We don't have one of these things.
We have one now, that's just a rubber tire, this one actually has the treads on it, and it's just, it's a lot bigger than the machine.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just real quick, sorry, real quick, we had talked about doing consent agenda as we went along, because we can't do it if everybody's not here, and I won't be here at the end of the meeting, how can we kick that into place now, because we didn't do it from the beginning?
Can we take the rate, Mayor, it may be 20 after, and do consent on everything up through that point?
If that's the desire of the council.
Let me ask David a question on that. David, is there any reason why we couldn't create a consent agenda, and then anyone who had been out or missed the rest of that could make a decision to withdraw something line by line on Tuesday night?
I see no reason why you could not do that.
And I think that's probably a better process, I'd like to keep moving, and if, if anybody who has to leave, we know one person has to leave, but if they want to remove something from that consent agenda, they can do that out of the...
That's fine with me, whatever works, so that we don't get stuck where we have to go through everyone on Tuesday, I'm good.
All right.
Okay.
We're looking good, Charlie, keep going.
Thank you, sir.
Especially didn't want it to happen because of me.
Item number four, water plant and fruit, I'm sorry?
Three.
Oh, how'd I forget that? Item number three, surplus and sell three trucks, Nick?
Sir, good evening. I'm here just to request the sale of three trucks. They're all older trucks, that would essentially cost more to keep them in our fleet and operational than it would be just to sell them. Two of the trucks, the two Fords are, have already been replaced, those are two of the street department trucks that we've ordered and budgeted for this year. All three of them need work, it's gonna cost more than 50% of their value, and I don't, I don't really recommend repairing them. But we can make some money off of good deals to offset some of the cost of purchasing the new trucks. I can go through them if you'd like.
I read them all, they're right here in progress.
It's pretty self-explanatory, they're all really old, over 150,000 miles on each of them. The Dodge needs about a thousand-dollar repair, and the two other ones are on their left leg.
I'm good.
BR549 on these, right? Any other questions?
That's enough, let's move on.
Item number four.
Sell them!
Water plant improvements?
Can't vote on it, but not yet.
What I have here before you is a request for water plant improvements, engineering services, and construction oversight for proposed upgrades. To give you a little background, what we have in Villarica is considered a conventional water plant, it was constructed in 1966.
Tom wants your attention.
Can you hear me now?
Get down there close.
Pick it up if you want to.
Like that?
Yeah. You can pick it up and hold it.
How's that? Can you hear me? Yes?
It's better if you try it.
Okay, all right. This is awkward. Okay.
If you was the chief, you'd have like Charlie or somebody.
No, I got it, that's good.
There you go, now you go. We need to hand help.
Somebody to stand there and assist him.
Captain.
Parker's usually able to...
Be allowed something in here. Okay.
And an umbrella fits, right? No.
Okay, so we have a conventional water plant that was constructed in 1966, and the components that make up a conventional plant are, and these may not make a whole lot of sense to you, but I'm just gonna go through the list real quick. A flash mix, where chemicals are introduced and, and mixed very quickly, goes to the next stage, there's a flocculator that mixes a little bit slower, goes to a large sedimentation basin, you have two filters, two clear wells, three finished water pumps that pump the water into the distribution system, a backwash pump, which we currently do not have a backup on, to backwash the filters, we have two separate skater systems, and limited chemical storage and feedability. The issues that we have right now is hydraulically, we cannot produce 1.5 million gallons a day for our permit, and we're only at about 1.2, 1.3 million gallons a day, which is about a daily loss of about 250,000 gallons per day that is not realized. We have no sludge handling capability, and that's gonna, that is required by EPD. They came out on an unannounced visit last November, and put us on notice. They conducted a sanitary survey in February of this year, also following up on that issue. We need a backup backwash pump, need a unified skater system, we need efficient pumps. The pumps that we do have are original to the plant, so they're 52 years old. The original design on those were, they were supposed to deliver 700 gallons a minute, two of them aren't. They currently produce about 450 gallons a minute.
Let me, let me help you out here real quick. We, we need this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
We can make more water, and we can work more efficiently.
Okay. Yeah, I got a question. Since we're spending $446,000 here, how did we pick out Carter and Sloot? Sloot? Okay, we, we went ahead and evaluated everyone that submitted a proposal on how they would approach these things. Four, four out of, we had six people show up, four of them submitted proposals, and we went through the proposals, ranked them, and the numbers that came across the board were not necessarily apples and apples, but when we looked at Carters and Sloot's, and we applied their bid to the rest of them, they were actually under the, the other prices that were, were offered. Hold on just a minute.
Tell them who did the review. Tell them who did the review.
Okay, the review was done by Curtis Boswell, who's been helping us facilitate, Tom Barber and myself.
Pete, can this, can this $446,200 be paid out of the GFA loan, or is that an upfront cost in anticipation of what we know is gonna be a multimillion-dollar GFA project, projects?
It's eligible to be, but I don't think the timing of the GFA availability will enable us, so I think we're gonna front the money, but it's part of the entire 3 million three or so for construction and engineering that will be GFA-funded.
So, if, if that's the case, then we could, out of the GFA loan, repay that?
That's our hope.
Generally, generally, you can, you can recoup those...
The engineering.
Those funded engineering costs.
Yes, obviously, when the budget is tight, I'm right.
Only to the extent that we talked in the, in the budget about the fact that we were gonna try to do GFA. So, what Curtis has done is he's done a 3 million five application for this, and a 2 million five for the first thing we do in sewer, and then we'll come back again. His limitation is he can't apply for what he doesn't know, and until we get more into it and can estimate things, we really don't have anything to base our application on. So, we've only sent them two for $6 million so far. And this gotta take us through about three years anyway, so this would do that, this would be a potential completion in 2020 sometime, if we were to design it and build it.
So, Tom, when you were telling us, I think three, couple of meetings ago, that, that we were working on RFPs, this was one of those, this is that, that RFP that we were waiting on?
This is the first one.
Okay, this is, this is spread out across time, it's not an upfront cost of half a million dollars.
This would be nine months, six, how long, how long was the engineering?
I think they estimated it's about nine months. Is this only the cost for the engineer, and this 446 is just engineer?
Right. We're thinking construction is three and a half million.
Well, so if you bid this project out, where are the bids? And I heard you explain that you all went through them and made a decision on this, but it seemed like they would have at least been included in this packet.
Right. Well, they weren't actually bids, they were actually proposals.
They're RFQs.
All right, I got you.
But we interviewed all four firms for, I don't know how long, an hour or longer each, so we, we, we met with them, and then we went back through their stuff. We spent probably a month after the, after the submission, trying to decide who to use.
Okay.
This is a huge decision for us, and Pete hadn't really talked about the benefits per se, but we are in violation on this discharge, because we're, we're taking the discharge and putting it in the creek, and there's only, I think Pete said 11 of us in the state that are still doing that, so they're, they're trying to crack down on the final 11, and so we, we either gonna get ahead of it, or they're gonna make us do it, so... But, we're not, we're not making all the water that we are permitted, so that would let us do that. We would have redundancy for the first time, so now, when we do maintenance, we buy 100% of our water from Carroll.
Mm-hmm.
We'll be able to just work on the, we'll have effectively two lines, so the second line, we'd be able to keep making water and stay, and quit whipsawing mat, which is what we're doing now, make, you know, buy none one day and all of it the next day, which is not equitable for him. Help me, Pete, what else? The, the, the real benefit potentially is, this significantly, potentially increases our capacity. So, if we ever find the...
Make more water.
Supply, and we permit it, the plant will be ready.
Make more, pilot less.
We don't need to talk about that, but you need, you need to understand there's multiple benefits.
Right, there, there's a hidden value there. So, if you have it, because we're trying to get reliability and redundancy to start with, to maximize what we, what we currently have, and the likelihood that we find a supplemental source, or that we may be able to bring in for future treatment, by doing this upgrade, we'll already have some built-in capacity already there, but you have what's called a permit to operate with that plant, and, and it's based on the filtration rate. So, if you go and apply to EPD for, for a higher filtration rate, then you effectively gain, gain a greater capacity by doing that. So, that's, that's a real added, kind of hidden benefit in this.
Didn't you say there's some time, too, where you have to drain the, drain it completely and shut it down, and we won't have to do that then?
Once a month with the basin, but then on top of that, there hasn't been any ongoing maintenance of your filters, or the, the mechanical aspects of it, so when you do filter treatment, you add another two or four, eight days during the course of the year, where those are days that you're down.
We gotta do this stuff.
I heard you talk about sludge, and we talk about a water plant, where's the sludge coming in from? From the suspended particles that are in, in surface water to start with, the, the whole idea is you're trying to remove that. That's the sludge part. The large tanks that look like swimming pools, allow that to settle, and as that accumulates, you have to get the sludge out. Okay.
And then the question is, what do you do with it?
Yeah.
We're putting it in the creek.
Oh, boy. Yeah.
Grounding the fish.
So, a sort of grandfathered, but the grandf...
It's about, grandfather's about to come of age.
Close.
Any other questions?
This is, this has been the most important thing that Pete and I have worked on.
It's a biggie.
It's just one piece of what we've talked to you about becoming water independent one day, this, this is central to that.
And where'd you say the 446,000 is coming from?
We're gonna have to front, front it, but eventually, get it, we get it back when we get the GFA loan. So, the general fund is gonna front this, and then GFA will pay them back.
How long will we get the GFA in?
I think it's November of 18, before they make a decision, if I remember what Curtis said, so it could be as early as early 19.
It is, as far as the board decision, it may be as early as June.
That'd be even better.
Yeah.
So, hopefully, the timing of the availability of the money and the completion of the engineering would, would at least line up, if not be available earlier.
So, the staff recommendation, of course, would be to authorize Carter and Sloot for engineering services and the water treatment plant improvements, and the proposed estimated amount of $446,200.
Thank you, Pete. Item number six, pressure-reducing valve optimization and training.
Y'all speak up, I'll be watching the rest on video.
Wait a minute. Task order, I'm sorry, item number five, I put a check mark on it, I need to stop doing that. Task order for edge road pipe replacement project.
Yes, this is a request for evaluation of alternatives, and the associated cost for those alternatives, for an appropriate waterline size, and also waterline alignment that would provide adequate fire flow capacity in the edge road, Liberty Road, Cool Road area, and in the southeast section of the city service area. Smart Water Analytics, Elio Arnella has been actively engaged with us for the last two years, he's worked under two grants that we got through GFA, and, so he's intimately involved and familiar with our system, he's been constantly upgrading our water model, so he'll go back and he'll update the model, he'll take a close look at what it's gonna take, and propose a route for the waterline, and, and then what the cost is gonna be involved with that. So, we didn't bid it out, because they've been involved with us so much, that, well, we go with them? Yes, sir. Very comfortable.
And he's given us three alternatives already, but we've gotta pick one. One of them is the route under the bridge, under the interstate, the other two are somewhere.
Any questions?
Nope.
You need a cart?
You need a cart, Pete?
I do. Smart Water Analytics, sorry. The next task order would be for Smart Water Analytics as well. And this is for doing a condition assessment of these pressure reducing valves that we have in the distribution system. And then also providing training, in-house training for our staff, so they know how to work on them and can maintain them and also understand what the objective is that we're trying to achieve with these pressure reducing valves. So-
What is that objective?
Pardon me?
You said the objective, what is it?
Well, to determine what pressure that these things need to be set on and what are we trying to do. In other words, if you have a high pressure coming in from one area of town, it's say 90 pounds per square inch, going through that device, what do you want the output of that device to look like? 45 PSI? What impact does it have on that particular zone in our distribution system? They may not all be set, the output may not be set at the same outlet PSI in every zone of town. But the whole idea is to try to dampen that pressure where you're more uniform.
Tell them the geographical zone of the PRVs.
Well, most of the PRVs that we know about are around the downtown area, off South Carroll Candler, in that area. There were six that were identified when Elio got a hold of the model that was done by Woodard and Kern. There are like 11 others that are identified, but we haven't been able to locate.
And these are, these are pressure reducing valves for commercial property or residential?
No, these are for the distribution system as a whole. These are on the trunk lines.
On the big lines, but in the old part of town.
But you can't find them?
We've got high pressure coming in from the two tanks, from Mira Lake and Hickory Level, but council member Marchmans, neighborhood can't handle that pressure. They can't handle 90.
It's a large device. If you have an eight-inch water line, we've got one that's installed on an eight-inch line that's completely controlling the pressure, or supposed to be controlling the pressure off of that main.
Well, that may be-
Since my whole subdivision has pressure reducing valves that comes off of a trunk line on 78.
In your house?
A whole subdivision.
There's one on-
Every house.
There's one on the trunk into his neighborhood, I think.
No, sir. There's one at every house.
Oh, y'all did it. So they did it a different way.
Okay. And that's very different than what I'm trying to describe as far as what's on the distribution system.
Yeah, these are big valves.
Okay, it makes some difference.
They operate on the same principle, but they're just, they're just a larger size.
Well, the trunk line is 90 coming down 78, and I think going into most of the houses is between 45 and 55 pounds.
Right. So here's, this is what you need to know, is we don't know where they all are, we don't know if they're set correctly or what they're set to, and we don't understand why. That's really the-
What the strategy was behind-
The thing that's good, Pete.
I think the attempt was, the attempt was to what's called creating a pressure curtain around the Sunset tank and trying to protect these old galvanized lines that are out there. But some of these devices don't appear to be modulating anything. They're full-throated, they're wide open. I recently came across a 10-inch valve that was completely closed on a 10-inch line. I don't know who did that or why they would have done that. We've got a lot of mysteries like that out there, but-
At first, I thought you were about to rationalize that strategy. That's what I thought you were about to do, but you're not, you're not going to do that. But we're in the, we've got, we've got people working on getting this all mapped out for us, right?
Yes.
That's what this is.
Right?
That's what $14,000 does for us, huh?
Well, we want to be self-sufficient. We want our in-house people to be able to take care of our own.
How are they going to find a load missing valves? I don't understand how you go about finding those.
Well, I don't know. We don't know if some of them have been paved over, a strong likelihood of that. We've had so many different proposed projects that might have indicated going back in the early 90s of a suggested PRV off of Stark Mar Road or one across town somewhere else. And, you know, we've got some addresses, we've got some locations, we have to go out there and verify it. And we've been out there a couple of times and haven't been able to find anything. So we just need to get a grip on the whole system.
Tom, well, we'll eventually, I know the training is an integral part of this, and I agree, but, you know, for those down the road, will all this be integrated with our GIS system so that whoever takes over in the future will know why they're there?
Absolutely.
If it's not-
Pete and I just want to live that point.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm going to live that long.
Other questions? Item number seven.
This is a request to purchase ground penetrating radar equipment in the amount of $26,690. They are a sole source. They're the only manufacturer and distributor of this equipment. We have PVC lines in the system along with cast iron, ductile iron lines. If you use the, what we have right now to currently locate lines, it's referred to as a pihp horn. And that type of device does not pick up PVC. And of course, when they put PVC, they didn't put tracer wire in there, copper where you can locate it. So the radar will pick it up. It would be a great addition, a great tool for us to locate some pipes that we have questions about. Do they run the way that we think they are? Our maps are incomplete, they're inaccurate. This will put us on target or within, in the area. We'll always have to feel, verify, and dig down on these to make sure that we know exactly what's there. But I went to the city of Winder, I've got a close relationship with the utility director there, and he was very gracious as a favor to me to put on loan his locator that has a lot of years of experience, over 10 years with this. And he came to Villarica and spent about a week and a half, and we learned so much from that, and it was so productive, it was just incredible. It's one thing that the equipment is very sophisticated, but when you have somebody that really can interpret it, it's worth having.
Is this a budgeted item?
Sir?
It's not identified in the 2018 budget. This is one of those items that we discussed about kind of reworking our SPOST. So this is something we've identified to be one of those items.
So you're going to rework SPOST and get this in? Is that what you're going to do?
Yeah.
That's what I recommend.
That's why we want to have another work session with y'all.
Yeah, there's no money in water and sewer for capital until 2021, the way, you know, the way that we're headed. So everything we do between now and then is GFA or SPOST.
Including these next couple items I saw?
Right.
Any other questions on item number seven? Item number eight?
This request is to purchase what are referred to as smart covers for a sewer monitoring system. It's actually purchasing six smart flow systems that will attach to the manholes in our sewers and be able to measure in real time and report back to us what the flow is in the sewer system at given time. And this will help us determine what the flows are in certain areas of town, also our inflow and infiltration after rain events. And this is a very useful piece of equipment right here. Once we purchase this, we can move these six around to other areas as we wish and take a good look, a holistic look at the sewer system and where these high flows may be coming from.
So where did you pick smart flow?
They're a sole source as well.
Everything's sole source.
That's it, we used it in Fairbrough. So what you need to know about this is we do a million gallons a day at the West Plant, and when we have a rain event, we do 2 million. And the capacity is 2.1. So we've got to figure out where the water's coming, where the rainwater's getting into the system. At the North Plant, we do 300 a day, and when we have a rain event, we do 9.
Oh, my Lord.
So it's tripling. So Mira Lake has significant infiltration issues. So when we get these covers, what we've got to decide is where we get the most bang for the buck. So you can extrapolate from that, that we're probably going to be out in Mira Lake someplace there to begin with. But we've got issues on both sides of the system where we either have-
So we're basically treating rainwater.
Covers that are leaking, manholes that are leaking, or stuff that's underwater, you know, in wetlands and getting submerged and leaking. We don't know. We've got pipes that are not, not solid anymore, you know, just joints. I mean, it could be everything. We've got to find out where the greatest volume is infiltrating and fix what we can get the most bang for the buck for.
Any questions?
Still a non-budget item?
That's what you said. You said, I don't know.
Did you put it in SPOST too?
Is that SPOST jockeying around stuff we've got to do?
Right.
Item number nine.
This is a request to engage an engineer to perform evaluation of the sewer lift stations. Well, Brandon Jones, the engineering associates, is who we're recommending for this evaluation in the amount of $81,251. This will involve him doing an engineering evaluation of the 31 lift stations that we currently have. It's important and very vital that we understand what the existing capacity of these stations are, the overall condition of them. The other part of his service would also be able to take a look at, provide the oversight for, on the mechanical for the equipment in these stations as well.
Okay, where'd you pick him?
Well, we have an ongoing relationship with Brandon Jones as well.
How long's that been going on?
Last year or so.
How long?
So if you, if you notice in the, in the material, we're talking about two companies. We're talking about an engineer and a mechanical company, a pump company. So we're going to bring to you in the May agenda, a recommendation for the mechanical company. So what we want Brandon to do is come in and do the engineering on every lift station and tell us what's the total capacity and what's the available capacity. And then when we get the mechanical in here, we want him to come in at the end of every lift station's process, which is when the pumps are pulled, and oversee the work of the mechanical company as those pumps are evaluated and put back into the wet well. In order to do that, that means he's got to come over here at the end of every lift, and there's 31 of them. So he's got to come here at least 31 times for that part of it, and he's got to come here probably one day for every two of them to do his work, which is 15. So he's, that's more than 45 trips. Well, he lives in Winston. If I hire somebody from Noonan, they're going to make the same 45 trips, but we're going to pay for 45 Noonan trips or 45 Marietta trips, 45 Lawrenceville trips. You can sort of get the idea. So my rationale is he's next door and we're going to save some travel time and billing time, right? So I think that influenced the bid that we got. The end result of this-
So he was bid out then?
No.
Okay.
No, we just, I mean, I got a bid, I got a quote from him is what we're working from. The thing that scares me right now is we've got a proposed neighborhood coming in at Liberty and Pool Road that I don't think we can service, water or sewer. And there's four lift stations between there and the plant. So we've got to evaluate four lift stations and four force mains just to make that one decision of whether we can permit them or tell the guy, yeah, you bought this land, but we can't, we can't have a neighborhood here. And then you got the big Goldsworth thing, the Williams Farm project on 61. Well, we can't supply sewer to it. Same question. We have nine lift stations on 61, and we can't tell them whether or not they can be serviced by us or they've got to do a package plant. Well, the only way we get out of this mess we're in is to grow the volume that we're servicing. And if we get the biggest thing that's coming to Villarica and can't service it and throw it off on a package plant, we've shot ourselves long term, right?
Yep.
So I need somebody to come in here who can tell me what our capacities are by lift station in total and what's available today and the force main, and then we're going to come back to y'all with the worst thing that you can imagine, which is going to be somebody engineering a different way of doing this, I think. Because the way we, all these 31 lift stations don't work or make sense to me. And you can see we've lost control. Are you feeling that? We've lost control of the water distribution and the sewer collection. We don't know what's in the ground, we don't know why it's the way it is, we don't know how it works. And when it's not working, we don't understand what they were trying to do, and if we change it, we don't know what else it changes. But this is, this is one of those steps toward us getting control of this thing again, but it's expensive, it's going to take a long time. I mean, I wish I could tell you, you know, I don't play the violin, I'd get it out and play you something, but I mean, this is dreadful where we are right now.
When he's evaluating the lift stations, is he going to evaluate the pump age and all this, the whole thing?
Between the two companies, yeah. He's doing mechanical, engineering, which is capacity, total and available, and then they're pulling the pump and evaluating the pump. So one of the things we're going to come back to you with is we got to replace some pumps, right?
Yeah.
Force mains are not big enough, or we need to get rid of these three lift stations and do one, or this lift station's not big enough, or, I don't know. You're going to hate both of us.
You're going to come back with a proposal, but how long is it going to take to get to that point?
I don't know. Couple of months, I would think, even if he works hard at it.
Yeah. And hopefully, one of the benefits that we might be derived from this is we might be able to eliminate some of these lift stations.
That would help. That's a lot of expense.
Yeah.
We're not in a good place. We haven't conveyed that.
I guess some of the issues that come up to me, and remember, I'm just an old fat football coach.
Yeah, I agree.
The question is that with those 31 lift stations in the ground, there's got to be some paperwork on them somewhere. There's got to be numbers on them. And I think some of you computer whizzes picked a computer up, punch it in, and you can find all you want to know about each of those pumps and never lay hands on them. For its capacity, what the output is, actually what kind of lines are supposed to be on them. And I'm not saying that I don't, I disagree with the $81,000. I'm saying that we get a head start on it to where when we, when he does get in, or whoever gets in, that he can go in and make that determination much quicker.
I think I can probably answer that a little bit. Tell me if I'm wrong, but when all these lift stations were put in, they were put in by the developers of the subdivisions. They didn't have any, they didn't, they didn't really care what was going on five miles from them or three miles from them, where the next lift station was. What we're doing now is evaluating the entire lift station network to make sure they're working in concert with one another or maybe working against one another. That's the difference in a subdivision doing a lift station and the city doing it from an overall standpoint. Is that, is that pretty fair?
That is.
But the biggest issue there is that in the last twenty-four years, uh, that I've been here, it seems as though about one, maybe two a year have been replaced, 'cause all of them have been replaced by flight, 'cause we were told that's the best one you can buy. All, but that's not, I'm, I'm saying if they tear up, burn up, whatever, we just put another flight pump in and go on, and all that information should be somewhere where you don't have that issue.
Well, one thing that, that, what we do have, Earl, and is, uh, we do have a booklet that has a lot of these lift stations identified. Woodard and Kern put it together. It's not complete.
Uh-oh.
But it's, it's, it's got some good information. We need to go back and re-verify what's there.
Okay.
And, and bring it up, up to date.
We're not starting from scratch.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Pete. Tab I, position, I mean, uh, number one, position reclassification?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, what we have before you today is the requested reclassification of a position in the library. Currently, the position is a library, a senior library assistant, and we want to reclassify it to an assistant library manager. This would involve a pay bump for the incumbent employee. It would involve changing the position from a pay grade fourteen to a pay grade twenty-two, and, um, changing it from a, a non-exempt or hourly employee to an exempt employee or salaried employee.
I'm not saying we recall in the back memory of this last budget cycle that we said no to the assistant library manager position.
I think it was requested.
Or I remember we talked about it, maybe now with you.
So I've been asked to present this. Um, I'm in favor of the reclassification because the incumbent employee has served as an interim library manager at least twice, and has done a very good job, in my opinion. Um, she's very responsive, she works hard, she takes care of, um, she's taken care of everything that we've ever, that I've ever asked her.
She does all the work, but what does the library manager do?
I'm not saying she does all the work. When she was the interim, she did do all the work. But now that we have a library manager, this would just be a compliment to the library manager, where she could handle the day-to-day operation of the library and allow the manager to create some more relationships within the community.
How long's it been since we had an assistant library manager?
We've never had one.
Do we need one now?
I, I think there's two, two things for you to consider. One is that we go to extended hours and that we have one or the other of the people on site every hour that we're open. And two, we, we expressed in the interview process our desire to have somebody in the community who's effectively selling the services of the library. And right, and, and prior to this point, and Vicki, you can help me if I'm overstating this, but I didn't get the impression we were out selling the library a whole lot physically with a person outside of the building, that we were pretty much hunkered down, right? And we want, I mean, you've met Evette. We want Evette out in the community. She's a great spokesman for what, for the city, for the library, but we, we can't just send her out there and not have anybody running the place, or vice versa. If she's there and, and the assistant's going out doing outreach. So that, that's sort of our thinking, is that's where we're headed. And we want them to start doing some extended hours and be open at night.
Let me ask you a question. Um, a four, a pay grade from fourteen to twenty-two seems like it would be a much larger step than three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
The, the, let me update your number, okay? It is twenty-five, forty-six, fourteen. The three thousand was a rough estimate, but Sharon and I looked at it today, and the change in the budget would be twenty-five hundred, four, five hundred and forty-six dollars and fourteen cents.
Is that because we have a short year?
No, that is because you have salary savings, okay, from a position that was budgeted as a full-time but filled as a part-time, and you've had a part-time position that's not filled yet. Okay, it's posted, it closes today or tomorrow, and, um, it's not filled. So you have the salary savings there. Uh, and also, the position that she was in as the director was budgeted at a higher pay grade.
Was this position, you might have said this already, and I'm sorry if, if you did, was this requested in the two thousand eighteen budget?
I originally said no, but now I'm, I'm remembering a spreadsheet I sent to Vicki. I'm thinking it was removed, but I can't remember if that was seventeen or eighteen. It was seventeen, 'cause I remember the particular spreadsheet. So it was requested in seventeen and it was taken out, but I think she was interim at that point.
So it was not requested in the two thousand eighteen budget?
Correct.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're proposing to pay for it by the savings in the other positions in the, in the library that we've either not filled or filled part-time instead of full-time.
So is Stephanie gonna start presenting new hires? Are you, are you gonna start doing this for everybody? I, I'm just confused why you're presenting this. And I, and, and actually, to save time, I, if, I don't know how everybody else feels, I'd like to see this, uh, in the twenty-eighteen budget as opposed to right now.
Twenty-one, eighteen?
Nineteen, sorry.
Yeah, nineteen.
We're about to start looking at that anyway, and we took it out of this, this year's budget, as Sarah just said.
The seventeen budget.
Let me ask this question. We, this is gonna be instead of a full-time and a part-time person?
You're asking the wrong person.
What happened is, a full-time budgeted position was filled as a part-time position.
Okay.
Okay, so you're saving the benefits and the salary there
Okay.
For half of a year. And then we have an open part-time library assistant that has not been filled yet.
That's three.
So no, it's, it's like two halves.
Yeah, two halves. So, but that is gonna be filled, right?
The part-time position will be filled.
The other one's already filled, and this, we didn't fill it full-time.
But it sounds like all you're saying is that you found a way to make the money up here, but you still are gonna cost us the additional money.
Yeah, strings.
Right.
Right.
Nineteen, you'll have to increase the library budget.
It feels like you're just shuffling money around, just because you had this vacancy and, and you didn't fill this position. Is that fair?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we'd like to go ahead and make the change with the hours and start with the outreach now.
Are we doing this in other departments? If we've got savings in the personnel, are we considering reclassifying people?
We don't, we don't have one that we're considering, but I would consider it if we've got another one. I just don't think we've got too many places that we're not full.
And I think this employee does an outstanding job. That's, that's not what this is about. To me, it's about, when, when department heads and city managers come before this council and they ask for a budget, it needs to include everything in that budget for that budget year. And I think that's what I hear being said up here. You know, to come to, to us, and mid, this is me speaking, but to come to this council before, in the midterm, and say, we've saved enough money to be able to pay this person extra money because we need them. I, I get that. I understand that we may need that person, but I, I don't, I don't think, my personal opinion, I don't think that's a good excuse. So.
I, I would like to see it in nineteen budget. I'd like to see it start there. We could consider it at that point.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, ma'am. Tab J, item number one.
Good afternoon, or good evening, at this point, Mayor and Council. Uh, the item that's before you is, uh, the opening act for the July third, um, entertainment. Typically, you will have, uh, two items, or two, uh, musical acts, if you will. Uh, you approved the headlining act, if you will, for, uh, July third last month. This is the opening act, uh, head games. Um, the contract is attached, as well as, um, the, all the additional information that they're typically requesting. This is a budgeted item. It's one thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. I don't know if you have any additional questions, but again
So they'll go onstage before departure?
Correct.
So there'll be the opening act?
Correct.
What time will they start?
Five-thirty.
Okay, and then departure?
I believe it's seven o'clock. I'd have to go back and look.
Okay, I'm just trying to get my calendar together.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Any other questions? Item number two.
This next item, um, and you may actually, uh, next two items, if you will, they're separate but related, so it may be possible for us to take the discussion together. Um, each year, the Pine Mountain Gold Museum hosts, uh, special events during the month of October and December. What, um, I have before you today, uh, is the contract for, uh, those two special events. Uh, one is the Halloween train, the other is Winter Wonderland. Um, the, again, this is, these events have been going on, I know at least a couple of years prior to my coming, and I started in, in, in twenty-fifteen. But, um, one of the things that, um, was previously discussed was, um, the ticket purchase price for these events. So I kinda wanna jump in, uh, really quickly with that, but the vendor, Supernatural Productions, um, our adult tickets out there for this special event, they, uh, are thirteen dollars plus tax, um, with the children, excuse me, ten dollars plus tax. Last year was our very first year, um, adding tax to, uh, these particular train events, so I know you did get some feedback on that. But, um, in addition to that, uh, we do a split with the vendor. That's a forty-five percent split that we do with them. The vendor essentially, uh, brings, handles all the decorations for the event. They bring all of the actors that come in, um, for the event. So I at least wanted to give you some kinda understanding or a basis. Typically, with the Halloween, Halloween, um, related event, um, a lot of the planning starts several months in advance. It's not really just essentially waiting till October. So much of, um, what happens or goes on in terms of design and setup and the installation of the decorations usually starts in August, um, and continues up until the time that the event kicks off. Um, what you'll find attached in here is also the schedule. Um, last year, as well as this year, we kicked the event off one weekend earlier, just to give you some idea. But the contracts, uh, that I'm presenting for you, um, also provide an option for renewal for next year as well. So, uh, those, it would come back before you, but what you'll see is, we've looked at the dates for both twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen. So I'll just kinda open it up. Um, I know you've gone out there. I don't know if you have any particular questions right off the
Well, yeah, I, I do. I was concerned about this last year. So the vendors, the actors are getting forty-five percent
The vendor.
Of the ticket price. Is that correct?
Correct.
And is that the same amount they were getting last year?
Correct. They've always gotten that amount.
Is this the same offense, Supernatural, the same one as last year?
Yes, from the, from the original, um, from the very original time that the events have started out there, Supernatural has always been the partner, uh, vendor for these events.
Did you or Wesley renegotiate this contract? Was there any room for renegotiation? It seems to me, we're providing the venue, we're providing the train, which we spend a, a great deal of money on, uh, and we're giving them forty-five percent of the ticket prices.
So in terms of the revenue split, uh, that was not renegotiated at all.
Do you feel like it should've been?
Well, quite honestly, um, you know, we've had an opportunity to talk about it, and, um, s- some of the time, with the time that goes into it and the number of, um, actors, entertainers that come out, um, to support this particular effort, um, when I looked at the, um, split, best way I can describe it is, it's one thing when you're doing a huge volume, then I would say that there may be a little bit more room to have a conversation of what that, um, split happens to be. But I don't know, really, when I sat down and looked at the numbers myself and looked at the duration of time, that it actually goes in, that you front-load into planning.
Well, let me ask you a question. How many tickets did you sell? Let's just say for the, for the Halloween event. And, and I would, I would ask, how many tickets you sold, if you know, and how many days that that was? You know, actual operating days?
Mm-hmm.
Because then, the argument that, not really the argument, but what you just stated is that there's not enough volume.
Right.
And because of volume, it might be necessary for them to get a larger split.
Right.
So if I can understand volume, then I might think, okay, because I like the service out there.
Sure.
You know, I think it, it provides something for, for the community. I just think forty-five percent seems like a lot.
Yes.
Is that forty-five percent of the gross, I'm assuming?
Forty-five percent of the tickets that are used.
Okay.
So for example, you might sell a hundred, but only eighty actually come in and get used. That was probably the main thing that
Well, but do you have that number?
Um
Because throwing that out there, it seems a little
You showed it to me, so we had it in our conversation.
I, I have it. Um, I thought I had attached it, but I know it's in this book here.
Yeah, the forty-five percent is a big percentage of a small number, unfortunately.
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're open on the weekend
Number one.
And what, four or five weekends, and then Christmas, and
Well, because we have staff out there.
It's costing us, are we actually making money or losing money?
Oh, no. No, it's
Not even worried about whether we make money. I just wanna make sure we're in a fair shake.
We breaking even?
Oh, no. No, we're subsidized.
My apologies, I do have that.
The operation of the trains
You don't have it with you, maybe you can ring it on Tuesday. I, I know everybody, it's after six.
Or she can text it out, email it.
That's right.
No, we can talk about it Tuesday night.
You'll have to email it out, Vicki.
Okay.
Any other questions on items? We're talking about items two and item three.
Well, they're pretty much the same.
Item number four.
Um, as you know, uh, due to the storm event that we had last week at the library, there was a lot of, uh, down, uh, damages relates to, uh, trees and limbs that, um, you know, fell as a result of the storm. If you don't mind, can you pull the pictures up so we can maybe have a better conversation? Um, we've started most of the cleanup at the library, however, um, there are some places where, if you're looking at the downed trees, we will not be able to go in and do any of the tree removal without bringing equipment in, and equipment that potentially crosses onto private property. So, um, I wanted to, part of, you know, our, our conversation with, um, the city attorney has been, how would we really move forward with even, um, if we have to go in and do some tree removal, just to remove what's on our side of the property line may, um, raise some issues, or it may not put us in the best light, if you will, for the trees that have fallen. So if you can go, just scroll back to the very first, um, if you're looking, stop to this one. The, this picture right here, my back is to Dallas Highway. Um, there's a tree that half of the tree came off at the, on the right-hand side, but that tree, um, that's a property line marker. So for that tree that originated on our side of the property, I would say eighty percent of the tree is now on the adjacent property owner's side. So we could certainly go and cut up to the property line and leave the rest on there, but I don't know that is the best light that
Okay, what are you, what are you proposing, then? Are you proposing to go on to that property with some kind of a waiver and clean that off?
Correct.
And David, have you looked at that?
Yes, I have, and I drew up a proposal statement.
And I think that's not the only way for us to deal with this. I, as a private property owner, would do that if a tree originated on my property. So to me, I don't see how we have an option not to do that.
Great.
We may need to cover our bases.
We have a legal option, but it wouldn't, it's not a good option to do that.
If we want it cleaned up, we gonna have to work with labor.
Like the stormwater, we feel like this is an item that comes to council, and, and you guys authorize us to obtain the release, hire the contractor, and go do it. This is a eighty-eight-hundred-dollar tree removal engagement.
I, I totally agree, and I'm glad that you brought it. It just is a no-brainer for me. But I'm, I, I like this process, but to me.
Others may have a different opinion.
Okay.
Okay. You happened to mention stormwater damage at the library. How did we not see the cap that was missing? You said there was a pit pipe that should've been capped?
Right. There, the, the drain line is in the suspended ceiling.
Right.
And the, the cleanout is above the pipe.
Yeah.
So there was no cap on it, but you couldn't see it because it was in the ceiling.
Somebody inspected the construction of the library.
Right. Yeah, who, somebody missed it more than once, I'd say.
Okay. Any other questions on item number four? Okay. Thank you, Vicky. Tab K, information technology. Jim? Is Jim gone? There he is.
Uh, he doesn't.
You don't have anything, Jim?
He's looking vacant.
Why are you on there?
He's gonna make up for it next month.
Okay. Tab L, we have reached public comment portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to give public comment, please do so. State your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Jody Mount, 214 Rockmark Road, here in Villarica. So a couple of things. One, we talked of Andy's next-site presentation, and it sounds like a good deal. I've never felt like we've gotten our money's worth from Carol tomorrow. I read lots of comments on that, showed lots of evidence on there, and everyone talks about Villarica Industrial Development Authority. It is not the industrial development authority. It is the Villarica Development Authority, and they have totally ignored the rest of the city. You know, that, that thing needs reworked, y'all. It's not, it's not, it's not working. Another thing I would like to point out as, or ask that you all consider on these board appointments, we just, oh, we just rubber stamp over and over, and, you know, yeah, these are good people, they've served lots, but we need some new blood. We need some new blood in some of these. And you say, oh, well, no one will volunteer. That's not true. When I stand my ground and say, no, I'm, I've done this, I'm going out, other people come up, new people. We have new people in this community. We have people that have been in this community a long time and haven't done anything, but now they're in a life position where they can do things. You know, we, we need to quit rubber stamping these same things and, and get some new blood on these boards, and let's get some things moving. And Mayor, this one is respectfully directed at you. It's just not possible for these department heads to come to y'all with their budget request and foresee every need, everything. New things, new opportunities are gonna come up all the time, and, you know, things change. I mean, you know that with your household budget. Things change. And this is, I just want to thank Tom, and Pete, and Charlie, and everyone that is working so hard to convey to us the dire situation that our infrastructure is in, and I just hope you all will take responsibility. And, you know, it's not an accident that we're here where we are today, and, you know, I'm just grateful that we have who we have up here now, and, because horrors, horrors, if this was the same as it was two years ago. You know, we, we wouldn't have been getting anything fixed, and this is, this is dire. This is, this is dire for us that live here. And like Tom's pointed out, we can't even okay for new buildings. We can't, we can't do it. Not responsibly, not responsibly. So, yeah, there's gonna be some screaming, but you know what? That, that's just, that's just it. You've gotta take care of it. Wasn't taking care of it when it needed to be done, we've gotta do it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. Anybody else? Okay.
I did have one thing.
Go ahead.
Do I have any more time? Sorry. The trees. I, I, I helped with that state legislation that has been gutted a lot on protecting our trees and quit giving the billboard people all these breaks and stuff. I am totally against the city signing anything that would get any trees down and that wouldn't. There are communities that totally do away with billboards. Their businesses thrive. Their communities are beautiful. You know, we, we do not need to bend over backwards for one business owner. You just don't need to. It's not our responsibility to keep zoning business.
Thank you, Johnny.
Let's see, we have the timer working.
Was that a timer?
Alan Gaston, 403, Shetty Valley Drive, Carrollton. There's no excuse for being late on a payment, but I was waiting on to get some of these issues resolved, but I don't want a late payment to be one of the issues to be resolved. So this check catches me up to August, I mean, April 30th, so I'm, I'm caught up. So, and also, somebody mentioned, why do we not get a lease with the, with the city, and it went with tourism? Well, the lease was, first started with Steve Russell with the city, and I want it to be a 20-year lease because that's what the bank wanted it. And, but Steve said, let's just do it for five, and I said, he said he'd be here forever. Don't worry about it, we'll, you know, I'll do it for five years, I'll be here forever. But when he left, then that's when the Villarica Tourism came in and did the 20-year lease with, trading out with the billboard. That was just a little clarification on that. And, and I'm not asking for any benefit toward the trees. The, the trees is a state law that gives the billboard companies to cut the trees, but you have to pay money for every tree you cut, so that, and that goes back to all the area. The DOT has no money to beautify any areas anywhere in the state of Georgia now. So all these areas you see around Pleasant Hill Road, Beaver Run Road, Welcome to Carroll County, 6178, that's all from billboard companies cutting trees and, and getting money to go to these benefits. But that 16% sales tax that the governor passed, gas tax, that money is, part of that money is going toward to cut, eventually every tree will be cut from the emergency lane to the DOT fence. That's what their goal is, to do that because of traffic accidents and the road, when you got trees up and the road freezes, they can't thaw out the roads quick because of trees blocking the sun. So they'll eventually cut from end to end, but this is a way that the roadside people can get money right now to do beautification. Once the DOT starts doing it, there won't be any way for them to get any money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I believe in 15 years of working for the City of Villarica, that's the first time I've ever seen a check given by someone to the, to the city manager. City manager. Okay. Consent agenda. Tab B, item one, obviously we wrote on next week, library committees, and B5 will be voted on? Correct. Okay.
Discussion.
These are, I'm, we're talking about this, which ones we're gonna put on consent agenda?
I know, but I'm saying it's...
Supposed to do a presentation.
It's a bit.
True. I'm gonna stop talking now?
That's it. Didn't we ask for a proposal from the lady on the pets?
Well, what's gonna...
Bottom line is, it can't be on the consent agenda.
What's gonna happen is we'll, we'll get an application.
All we're doing is deciding which ones are gonna be on consent agenda right now.
Okay.
All right, moving on.
Okay. No. B4 will be on consent agenda.
Three.
B3?
We're not passing anything.
D.
He isn't dog. He isn't Danny.
No, it will be on consent agenda. I mean, not unless y'all want it on there.
Historic preservation.
D3? We've never...
It's a board appointment?
Talking about D3, right?
D, dog.
Dog 3.
D3.
And that's the...
We have to vote on it.
It's a board appointment.
I mean, if y'all want to put it on consent agenda, we can.
David, can we put, we have a board appointment on consent?
D3.
Okay. D3, we'll put it on consent agenda.
Is that the first one?
Yeah.
Man. We gotta pick up the pace.
We got a lot to go here.
Why, why are we not, why are we not putting Fran's thing on consent?
D5.
D5.
It's a good question.
Why aren't we putting Fran Newton's reimbursement? That sounded unanimous to me.
All the way back to B3.
Okay. Is that everybody's?
David, have you got a problem with that?
I don't have a problem with it.
B3. B3. Is that everybody's? Bingo. All right, uh, where we at? Y'all jumping around around. D5.
Yes.
Consent agenda? Anybody see it otherwise?
You got a public hearing on that?
D5?
Wait, D5? That doesn't look like an amendment.
The parking.
Now, this is reverse bingo parking in one way.
No, D5.
This is the one, one-way parking on West Wilson. Sorry.
Okay, we're gonna have to have a document to go with the B3. All we did was do it, talk about it.
All right, Mr. Mayor, E1.
D3 has already been added to the consent agenda. Are you saying, take it off the consent agenda?
No, I'm not saying take it off. I'm saying we don't have anything, we didn't have anything presented, other than Herbert Letter.
So are you suggesting that we take it off the consent agenda?
No, my, my motion was to reimburse her the $947 whatever, whatever.
Okay.
There is.
So we'd just be approving the motion to reimburse.
Okay.
Tab E.
One is yes.
All of them.
All of those are consent agenda?
Do two and three.
Don't they license the alcohol happening?
You mean E, two and three?
Yeah.
We have a dissenting vote on two and three, I would suspect.
Yes. Well, we typically talk about that anyway.
So you got 1, 4, 1, 4, and 6, potentially.
E4?
Yes.
Did we add E1?
E5? Nope.
Nope.
I asked David Macklin a question on...
That's correct. He did.
Let's just wait.
F, let's see, F1?
1 and 2.
Yes, and yes.
1 and 2?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
But is it, well, okay.
I'm, G2, yes.
Do we have a problem with, yeah, G2 is a consent?
Yes.
Okay.
No, no, no problem. No problem. No problem.
H, let's see, H1?
Yes.
H2?
Yes.
Slow down.
H3?
Yes.
H4? H5?
I don't think it needs to be on the consent. Too much money.
So take number four.
Take four off.
Take four off. What about, what is that number then? What, take five off also, or?
I'm just trying to move on, 'cause Danny said no, so that's not unanimous.
Well, I, I agree, but what is that? I mean, just, is there, do you give us any...
Five hundred grand is too much.
Well, apparently 446 is too much.
That's a noncommittal answer.
I think $81,000 is too much to go on the consent.
Okay, so five will not be on consent. What about six?
I say yes.
I say yes on six.
Seven?
Yes.
Yeah.
Eight?
Yes.
Nine?
And I say yes.
I say no.
If five is off, eight's off. I mean nine, excuse me.
Five is off eight.
Eight is off.
Didn't you take five off?
No.
Five is on the consent agenda.
Five is on the consent agenda. The only thing I...
And nine?
No, nine is not on the consent agenda.
All right, I tried. All right, so everything on that section except for four and nine?
Four, five, and nine.
So five is off.
Mm-hmm. That's what I, unless y'all see it different.
You want five, five are on.
Forty-nine, that's why I asked, you know, forty...
Five is on the consent agenda.
He said off.
I got no problem with it being on.
All right, five is on, so four and nine are off, and that's off that section.
Got you. Tab I, one. Okay, J1?
All of them are on.
Yeah.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Hold on, go back. Two and three, I wanna see some numbers on.
You can't make this stuff up. Two and three were taken off the consent agenda, so the only thing we have, well, I'll go back over them all.
One and four.
All right, and, okay, so let's go back now and decide which, make sure I got...
Hold on, hold on. Are we gonna bring back a, an engagement letter or something on the $8,800 on the tree removal? And do y'all wanna see, it's not, it's in my spending authority, but do you wanna approve that with the authorization, instruction for us to go on the private property? I wanna, I wanna...
We need to, don't we?
'Cause I'm thinking you want it together.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll put that together before Tuesday.
So which one is that?
Charlie's got it. Didn't you say the $8,800?
All right.
Tree removal.
So we'll put that on...
I know it's on the tree removal.
J4.
J4. Obviously, it's on the tree removal.
With the, with the release and all that stuff for the tree removal.